We call the roll, Betsy.
I know that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. Had some sad news over the weekend. I'd just like us to take a moment of silence for, as we honor memory of a Ball-Chatham bus driver and cafeteria worker, Kim Myers. Kim passed away this weekend suddenly, and she will be missed by the district. She was a great employee. So if we can take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Can we all join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is approval of our agenda for this evening. Agenda is posted in your board docs. I need a motion to approve that agenda as posted.
Salute.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And call roll, please.
Carter? Yes. Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Muses?
Yes. We have two items coming out of closed session tonight, and they are to approve the closed session minutes for April 22nd, 2013, and May 1st, 2013, as presented in your board packet tonight. Motion to approve those.
I'll move.
Thank you, Steve. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Call roll, please.
Carter? Yes. Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Muses?
Yes. Next item on our communications, our good news report. I think Mr.?
Mr. Green's back there.
No, Mr. Green's back there. Okay, you were in the hall the last time I saw you.
Mr. Woollett out there, too?
He's coming. Got some presentations to make for our...
You don't get to hide, Mr. Woollett.
Good evening. Tonight we need to recognize our IESA State Track Medal winners. This year we had 50 individuals qualify for the state track medal.
Awesome.
And of those 50, we had 22 that medaled, and as you'll be able to see, many of them ended up with multiple medals. I'd like to introduce our head track coach, Max Woollett, that will talk a little bit about the track team.
Always a fun night when the kids get to get recognized. These kids represented our school district awesome all year long, and when you send this many kids to every school, and they carry Glenwood on it, it's always nice to hear other coaches come up and always tell you, hey, your kids are always report on time, your kids are always respectful at the start-finish line, and so the most important things at this age get done, and they're doing it. I'll go ahead and go through. Why don't you guys kind of stand up here so everybody can see you getting in line? We had two, well, they're getting ready, we had 248 kids start track this year, so we always have a lot of kids.
Come on, Eric.
Got a lot of friends.
When I call your name, come up. I don't see Tony Rolf, but Tony Rolf, he got second place in the long jump at state. Anna Hammond got third place in the high jump. Do you want to give him the certificate at that time? Vincent Hill as a sixth grader, he got seventh place in the 100, sixth place in the 200. Seventh grade four-by-two with Lucas Stroh, Garrick Walker, Dan McLeod, Vincent Hill, and alternate Logan Hammond got fourth in state. Mikey Ford got eighth in shot put. Erin Rush got fourth in long jump. Mackenzie Bray got sixth place in shot put. Our seventh grade girls four-by-one made up the Storm Cassad, Lauren Bima, Courtney Jenkins, Ryland Jacobs, and Mattie Clem got seventh in state. Both four-by-one and four-by-two seventh grade girls placed in state, and to have that deep of talent is unreal. Our four-by-two made up Erin Rush, Kira Downey, Armani Flynn, Sierra Lar, and Olivia McLintock got third.
Great job.
And our four-by-fourteen, Kira Downey, Armani Flynn, Lauren Bima, Olivia McLintock, alternate Sierra Lar, they are state champions.
Just a couple other records that were broken this year.
Reed Keatsman tied a record that's been here since 1980 by Mike Cott of 11.4 in the 100. So that got tied. Tony Rolf broke J.D. Rush's long jump record with a jump of 20 feet, one and a quarter inches. The eighth grade boys four-by-one team broke a 1979 and 1980 record with a time of 47.89. The seventh grade girls, Kira Downey tied a seventh grade girls high jump record, Diana DeFoe's record, with a jump of five feet. The seventh grade girls four-by-two broke a record from 1993 with a time of 151.4. Mikey Ford broke the county record, seventh grade boy shot with a throw of 40 feet, seven inches. And Allison Warner broke county record in eight girls long jump with a jump of 16.2. So had a lot of records broken this year, had a good time. Finally, I see Tracy and Gray sitting over there, and they donate a lot of their time to this community. I don't think we'd have the runners that we do without them running the track, or they volunteer out there. Gray comes out, volunteers his time with the kids, and we really need to recognize that because it really helps our community out a lot. So thank you both.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you, Coach.
Good job, Max.
Thanks, Ryan. He was going to bring them all, and I'm like, Ryan, you can't really have so many kids in here. Well, then they come anyway because they all won.
That's right.
Didn't they? I was like, Ryan, I can't see that many kids in the boardroom. He's like, okay, I'll just bring them all, they're all here. Good work, I should say that more often, right? That's awesome.
Geez, that cleared the place out.
Seventh grade boys four-by-two also broke the stool record by three seconds.
That's great. Thanks, Max.
All right, moving on, we have number two, Carrie, you want to go through five by two?
Mr. Lee. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, he's right there.
Mr. Lee? Yes, you're way ahead of me.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Ryan Bandy, who teaches our TV production broadcasting and 18 other courses in the department to honor some kids for some creative work that they were on the force.
Gavin Carter. This is Gavin Caruso, Carter Staley. Gavin's a sophomore, Carter's a senior. They both did very well in our statewide video contest on Radon. Gavin was a top-10 finalist, got honorable mention, and Carter won it.
Awesome.
Great job. Two of our videos that competed against the entire state include those big Chicago schools, so we're very proud of them. The judges were, I guess, who are they? Like the Illinois?
Long Island.
Yeah, Long Island, yeah, okay. So the panel of judges this year, we won it two years ago based on popular vote, so we won it both ways now. But we're very proud of them, they're both very talented. Carter's going to UIS next year, he's going to do some great things in the future, and very excited for him. I think Betsy actually has Carter's winning video if we can show that.
It's on, yeah. It is on the board docs.
[inaudible] Could you guys sit down? [inaudible] How can you tell? You can't. Radon is an odorless, colorless, tasteless gas that is seen when you're in a closed space, and is estimated to kill 21,000 Americans from a lung cancer year, the second-leading cause of their secrets. The American Lung Association will provide you with a test vehicle that can last for 48 hours to 90 days for maximum accuracy. So what does Claire do about the knowledge she has? Well, the Radon mitigation system can be installed, removed Radon from its source a year ago, and safely releases it into the atmosphere, leaving your home to air breathe. Much better, Claire.
Awesome.
Great job.
There you go, sir. Please.
Very cool. Good work, guys.
Excellent.
Thanks, Mr. Bandy.
Thank you. And Mr.?
Good job, Gavin.
And Mr. Lee, our good news for Glenwood High School?
Yeah, you know, I think what you just saw, I think is a perfect example of what goes on because of the quality of students we have, the quality of teachers we have, and just the community in general. If you remember, just a month ago, we brought in a young lady whose artwork is now Carnegie Hall. And the things that are able to happen because of all the support and the people we have in this district, big high school, and all the buildings, tremendous learning institutions. Because of that, the annual U.S. News and World Report came out, and we are currently ranked academically 49th in the state out of over 600 high schools. If you look at the list online, you'll see that 46 of the 49 ahead of us are Chicago-area schools that have a lot of money, a lot of them are magnet schools, charter schools, and the like. If you move outside of the Chicago area, we're ranked third in the entire state of Illinois, and that's based on test scores. So once again, a very good news for the high school, and it just kind of shows what goes on. Doesn't that just happen in high school? It's built from the bottom up, and once again, we're recognized for some outstanding academic achievements, so great news for us.
Could I add to that, Mr. Lee? I was privileged to attend the pride breakfast a few weeks ago, and more than just test scores, you recognize, and your staff recognize, some wonderful kids at the high school for who they were and the good men and young men and young women that we are raising in this district, and I was really impressed and pleased to be part of that because there's more, there's more to being a good adult than just a really high test score, and I saw it that morning.
You know, and it's so hard for me, like, we're like, we call it, I call it award season, you know? Or I had three different award-type ceremonies, and I'm always trying to express, you know, how well our kids do academically, but you need to see our show choir, and you see our bands, and you see our lecting, and it's like you're always forgetting someone. You know, you need to see our art kids and what they do, and it's just amazing, so, yeah, the type of kids we have are not only high-functioning, but they're just good people. That's pretty cool.
If I could add something to that Lisa said, I was at the scholarship breakfast this morning, and it was a 323, I think, in this class, is that about what it is? And it was 130, 140, 139, was it?
139.
139 kids out of that total received scholarship money from a variety of different sources that totaled over $7 million this morning. So they thought last year that it totaled over $5 million, and I think in talking to Nada, I think she thought that was the record. Well, just did it by two.
We didn't have room to bring them up front, so you don't have a problem.
Yeah, it was wrapped around, around up there, so it was, and that's, it all goes together, and it starts in, starts in pre-k, and we bring them right through, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Very cool.
Next, you want me to take this, or you want to?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'll take it. Another good news report. Last month, we talked about when we elected officers, or earlier this month, I guess it was, that Lisa was given up a officer position here because she was running for directorship at the Illinois Association of School Boards, which was going to happen, the election was the following night, and Lisa was successful in that. She is now on the Illinois Association of School Boards Board of Directors. How long, is that a?
Two years.
Two years, okay, two-year term. There's 21 divisions throughout the state, so she's one of 21 directors throughout the state, and, great job.
That's great.
So now we got the inside on our... No, but congratulations, great job, and they're lucky to have you, so.
Absolutely.
And then 5-5 here is the opportunity for citizens to address the board, actually visitors to address the board concerning any agenda topic, and nobody stayed unless somebody can't see in the back. Okay. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. We have consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-7. Is there any board member who wishes to pull one of those out for individual consideration? If not, then I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-7 as outlined in your board packet tonight.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Linda, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Linda.
And also would like to say I'm glad we're pulling those teachers off.
We are. We, this again, we pulled two more, didn't we, Carrie?
Yes.
Two more back, so.
Yep. Very happy to do so.
And rehire all the libraries.
Yeah, they applied.
Yeah, they applied.
Yeah, they applied.
Call roll, please.
Yep, Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Muses?
Yes. Next, we have our personnel consent agenda items 6, or I'm sorry, 7-1 through 7-35. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything out for individual consideration, 7-1 through 7-35? If not, then I need a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda items 7-1 through 7-35 as presented in your board packet tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Lisa, and a second, please.
My second.
Thank you, Linda.
And also would like to say I'm glad we're pulling those teachers off.
We are. We, this again, we pulled two more, didn't we, Carrie?
Yes.
Two more back, so.
Yep. Very happy to do so.
And rehire all the libraries.
Yeah, they applied.
Yeah, they applied.
Yeah, they applied.
Call roll, please.
Yep, Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Muses?
Yes. Next, we have approval of playground renovations. Dave?
Our next recommendation, accept the playground renovation at Ball Elementary School, Chatham Elementary School, G.I.S., from Ace Contracting, for $710,000. That's going to be $710,000, $105,000. There is a difference between the architect's estimate and the base bid, and there's reasons for that, and the reasons are, we added drainage systems to this plan that were not needed at Glenwood Elementary School. Fencing was added, demolition was included, and there was no demolition at Glenwood Elementary School, which is what we based our original estimate on. Sidewalks were also required to allow accessibility to all. So those are some of the things that caused the price to go up a little bit, but after examining the dollars, the hell of dollars are being spent, that's a fair price. So tonight we're asking that we accept the bid.
I have a question. Does that also include new equipment, or just the?
It's new equipment. Mike, help me out.
Yeah, it's about $160,000 worth of new equipment. Not at all of the, those playgrounds are at Ball, and G.I.S., and at Chatham, and Chatham's getting two new playgrounds worth of equipment. G.I.S., the equipment is remaining because it's in good shape, and Ball is getting one new playground. So about $160,000.
The one new playground at Ball is for K-4?
It's for the small, the preschoolers.
Oh, the pre-k?
Pre-k kids.
But the rest of it is staying?
Yes.
On the equipment side?
Rest of it is staying, and it's actually being expanded a little bit. There are certain guidelines you have to go by for fall protection, clearances, and so on and so forth. The big playground at Ball needed to be increased a little bit in size so that the swing sets had that fall protection, so.
Are they getting rid of the playground that is between?
Yes, it's going away, it's going to be grass. There will be no wood chips, no mulch areas left, and no black rubber areas left at any of your playgrounds.
This will be all porn play now.
It's all porn play. A lot of that permeable, drainable surface. The Chatham school site has, has a lot of moisture issues underground, that mulch out there stays wet. It was, for example, it actually this winter, it was frozen down 12 inches deep. And Ball site seems to drain fine. G.I.S. has some drainage issues as well, so we added some drainage tile systems to the sites to hopefully relieve the moisture problems.
See, Dave, you took this out of the street, and you only had two people answer to your request.
That's true. Playground work is a small discipline of construction, and there's very few people that do it. So we were happy that we got two bids.
Did you say you were going to take the grass out in between the pre-k and the big kid playground at Ball?
Yes.
So it'll be porn play?
There's actually like three playground areas there right now, and I've had one smaller area that's got a picking table, and another area that's got rotten climbing things on. Everything's going to go away except for two playground surfaces. They'll all have the safety surface.
But it'll be separated, the playgrounds, you know, there's going to be a big space between the?
It'll also be fenced. We added, we added 350 feet of fence at Ball around the preschool area to contain those students.
So there'll be a big grassy area?
Between the two, right. It's grass between the two, so there's two separate porn plays, right?
Yeah.
Because that'd be too expensive to porn play that all.
Yeah, that safety surface is very, very expensive, you know, it's what you have in Glenwood.
Yeah, we found that with Glenwood Elementary.
It's really, it's really nice stuff. It's the way to go, it's the state-of-the-art method.
What's the life expectancy on that stuff?
You get a five-year warranty with that product. There's maintenance that goes, it's got a similar surface to it like a track does, and after a period of years, there is, there's a maintenance plan that you have to follow along with it, that should last for a long, long time.
We had quite a discussion, I know, with Glenwood Elementary School whether to go to wood chips or to go to this porn play, and the maintenance on the wood chips was also very, very high and not satisfactory.
That's a good point. The wood chips take daily maintenance, and they're cut down, they're drawdown, and labor, there's just no one to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Rick?
What firm did the Glenwood Elementary, the first one we did, the firm that's going to do these, and have been very happy? Which firm installed the Glenwood Elementary?
No, the porn play.
You're looking at them.
Yeah.
The porn play was an outfit out of Chicago that did it.
Oh, okay.
You're not putting together all the equipment this time? Have it for bid.
I was asked.
Jim's good with us.
My rate's too high. There's no other questions, I need a motion then to approve the bid of Ace Contracting to install the playground renovations, I'm sorry, to do the playground renovations at Ball Elementary, Chatham Elementary, and Glenwood Intermediate School for a total of $710,105, as presented. Okay, thank you. And a second, please.
I'd like to second it after all our discussions, I'm really glad that we're able to do this to all the other schools.
Thank you, tax papers.
Yes.
Approving.
Call roll, please.
Yes, Weizen?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Muses?
Yes. Next, approval of some interior renovations at Ball Elementary. Dave?
Tonight we're recommending that we accept the bid from United Constructors. That's if you open it up, please. We did a pretty good turnout for the bidding. United Constructors ended up being low, and they were considerably underneath the architect's estimate. We did make the call to the contractor, and once again, we were told he's tired of coming in second, too. And he understood fully what the project, so we're recommending tonight that the United Constructors receive the bid.
What kind of renovations are these, are bathrooms and some other renovations there?
Mike, you want to talk through the place? Yeah, there's, I think there's nine bathrooms throughout the school in pairs, with the exception of, there's one bathroom in the gymnasium under the bleachers that requires pretty much wholesale replacement. There's a few, there's a behavior room added at the north end, then there's a bunch of other kind of what I would consider dogs and cats, and doors replaced, some, next year, windows, a window put in one room, a few wall modifications throughout, adding a couple of doors, one from the old boiler room to the outside, and one from a storage area to the outside, for user convenience for custodians.
Stay here. We have the stay here.
Pardon me?
Stage.
The upper area of the stage, as well as the old locker area below the stage, which is storage, but everything's going to be cleaned up and improved.
Are they still using the rock wall?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take, we're going to paint the room, we're going to re-carpet it, new ceilings, we're going to take the rock wall down, only the rocks, and we're going to save them in case somebody wants to put them back up, because no sooner we do that, somebody will want them back, but it's going to look like a new room when we're done.
Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion then to approve the recommendation of the bid from United Constructors for $178,000 for the interior renovations at Ball Elementary as discussed this evening. Motion? Thank you, Susan. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Call roll, please.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meier?
Yes.
Weizen?
Yes. Next, we have some parking lot and drive changes at Ball Elementary. Dave?
Our recommendation tonight, accept the bid from B.J.C. cement contract company. The base bid is $585,000 with an alternate of $19,000. We're recommending that we accept both. They are just below the architect's estimate, which included testing survey and boring. And I'm going to ask my architect to help you with this. I do have drawings that'll help you understand what it is we're going to do. And Mike, you want to walk and clear this, please? Is this up? Okay. This is the, this is the western drive along, along the western side of the school over there. It's going to be replaced entirely with concrete, fiber mesh concrete, there won't be any asphalt remaining out there. The low bidder bid on concrete, and it's, the pricing for concrete's been coming in very favorably compared to what's happening with the oil industry. We are, there's some issues with how
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Musis?
Yes. Next, we have some parking lot and drive changes at Ball Elementary. Dave?
Our recommendation tonight, accept the bid from VJ Cement Contract Company. The base bid is $585,000 with an alternate of $19,000. We're recommending that we accept both. They are just below the architect's estimate, which included testing, survey, and boring. And I'm going to ask my architect to help me with this. I do have drawings that'll help you understand what it is we're going to do. And Mike, you want to walk and through this, please? Is this up? Okay. This is the western drive along the western side of the school over there. It's going to be replaced entirely with concrete, fiber mesh concrete. There won't be any asphalt remaining out there. The low bidder bid on concrete, and it's, the pricing for concrete's been coming in very favorably compared to what's happening with the oil industry. We are, there's some issues with how buses unload and drop off students. We have resolved those. Why? By including a median separation as well as a roll of cars. And by the way, we have contacted both IDOT and ISB to see if they have any special regulations. You know, school buses and students on school sites are always kind of a predicament, you know, always kind of hard to, unless you can totally separate them. So we think we've done the best we can. David has also had some conversations with your local police force, and they are in agreement that everything that we're doing is as safe as we can get, you know, for the students. The issue has to do with a stopped school bus and the arm being out and a vehicle trying to pass that school bus legally. And we think that if we separate it enough with a median as well as parked cars, that we can allow some traffic to still continue on the site when the school buses are there with the arms out. So both the western lot, the northern lot's being reconfigured slightly, and it's actually being shortened up a little bit by about 20 feet or so. There's some extra, anybody that's been around the north end of the building, there's some extra space there that seems extra wide. And I think they had sometime in the past had envisioned a roll of school buses down through the middle or something to that effect. So, but we've reconfigured it, we've laid out parking a little bit more differently in that area, and we've also got the median approach there. We're continuing the drive all the way out to the eastern road. It's all going to be concrete, but a little bit of drainage issues that have to be taken care of with some storm sewer work and the like. And then the eastern lot and the southern, what I call the preschool lot, those are both going to be, the tracks are going to be repaired, and the asphalt is going to be resealed. We are not replacing those, they're still in good enough shape. And it only gets light usually, except for the, there are some school buses that roll on that preschool lot, but it's holding up so far. We took that as an alternate bid to try to contain the budget, but looks like the budget is holding. So, and in my opinion, you're getting concrete, you know, that's what you got at G.E.S., and that's as maintenance-free as you're going to get for a parking lot for a while.
It's interesting that it's cheaper than asphalt. Can you point to the stop signs, Dave, where, because then that traffic on this north road will be two-way up to the side? And then show them where the, there'll be stop signs right there, and then?
Stop sign here. Stop signs here, stop signs here.
And then buses will drop off there. And then, so you've got separation of between the buses, you have a median, and then parked cars length, and then your traveling cars are going one way on the other side, so as far, as far away from students as possible.
Oh, you're going to install a median between the bus lane and the parking? Oh, okay. Where's student drop off?
In the back of the building still?
Still in the back?
Student drop off is still back here. There is, we're adding student drop off sidewalks 10 foot wide, part of this project. Also striping that's not there and some signage. So, I didn't bring those sheets up.
See, Lisa just asked about the separation there. It's, I think techni, and the reason Dave went to the police and took a look at this is because of the legality of people coming into that parking lot to go around the back of the school coming from the south, and those stop arms are out. That is technically a violation of, you know, passing a school bus with a stop bar mountain. So this, and you were talking to them, and you talked to ISB and State Board and everything?
IDOT.
IDOT.
So when you're coming in from the south?
Uh-huh.
Are you, if you?
Actually, our safety and security manager, Randy Allen, he actually is at our talking for us.
If you're coming in from the south, then, and this north-south area is full, are you, those people have to then drive all the way over here and then come back in to that north lot?
But we assume, yes. But we assume that most of this parking out front will probably be visitors to the office, and we're going to encourage staff to park in that north lot?
Gotcha.
Because then they can, you know, they can walk in, and they're there for the day. But we think this is the best spot for visitors, because they're going to then go straight into the office. So that's kind of what our hope is.
See, you always had staff parking out front there, and then there was three spaces.
Right, right. Then you really struggle to find a spot, plus it's all that one way, and people are always kind of, can I turn around and go the other way? And I don't know that we've probably ever had a time, have we, Joe, that people don't go the wrong way on the one-way at Ball?
Has it always been two-way in the back?
No, that has been one-way always, hasn't it? In the back?
Yeah, originally, it was designed for two-way traffic.
Oh, in the back here?
The back.
Both ways.
Has it? Okay.
All the way around.
Okay.
So that doesn't park them much, you got to go past it to get back around?
That's what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
And we did talk about, the only thing that would remedy that is, we talked about, we could possibly do a two-way on the other side of the visitors' parking.
Right, on the south side.
But then you've got to straighten out those visitors' parking, and then you've got to add some more, you know what I mean, where those shrubs are, or whatever that is drawing up.
Those are evergreen.
So, we just figured.
Did the bid specify concrete?
They gave an option for that, an alternate bid, and the contractor, the low contractor across.
Wanted to use concrete?
He's a big flatwork concrete guy.
They've done a lot, BJ's done a lot of concrete work for us.
They did, they did, G.E.S.
G.E.S., yeah.
They brought in primarily asphalt, that's why they're so high. Is that right?
Pardon me?
PH brought in, they normally do asphalt, that's why they're so high.
Yeah, they're, they're normally kind of, yeah, they do mostly asphalt, and they have to go out to get their concrete. There's a lot of median concrete work that goes with that asphalt, though, and they don't specialize in that. That's a consequence, that's a consequence, that's what you say in the wind. Had they opened that bid first, I would've been in shock.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Then if there are none, then I need a motion to approve VJ Cement Contracting Company for, what was the, $604,000 for the redoing of our parking lot at Ball Elementary, the parking lot renovations, as in your board packet tonight. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. In a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Linda. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Musis?
Yes. Next, we have a building addition at Ball Elementary. Dave?
Tonight, we're asking, we're recommending to accept the bid from O'Shea Builders for $1,696,96 for building addition. And I'm going to ask the architect of record for that job and the CM to come in, come on up and explain what we're talking about here, how that job breaks out.
It's great dealing with O'Shea Builders, and really, the way this job breaks out, we are just a little, we have included the whole contingency of the 1.69 number, worst-case scenario, as far as the number that we have here. We are approximately, compared to the budget number, right at $12,500 over the budget, but we still maintain $138,000 contingency on the project. So assuming we don't spend that contingency, which we don't plan to do, and that is all subject to whatever Dave approves, we'd be well under budget on the project overall. And we had good participation in the project, for it being a smaller project. We had a lot of the good subcontractors from the G.E.S. and G.I.S. projects that are bidding all three schools, really, masonry, studs and drywall, site work, those types of things. And overall, bids came in very favorably on the work. The only information that we're still waiting for, if you notice on the telephone and data, which this district is taking care of themselves, that number's still yet to come in, but that's not a large number. So overall, everything was very, very good.
Questions?
So is this all considered the phase one part of that project?
Yes.
Phase one?
Yes.
And this says guaranteed maximum price presentation, so that's the max, and the contingency is included, I understand that. So as long as Mr. Murphy doesn't have to approve any changes to that, he should be good to go with this?
So, I know we've addressed this before, but the contingency is in addition to the 8.5, correct? Or is it included within that?
Contingency right now is included within this number.
1.6.
Okay.
Yes.
And I have a request for financial reporting. Is there a way that you can keep a running Excel schedule by working with Patrick, Dave, so we can just have a running idea of budget, actual, by project, and, you know?
That's an excellent question. That's why we hired our CM. He'll be providing that information on a monthly basis.
Oh, great.
And not only this is, will this be the price we're asking you to accept, but it's also the price they're going to guarantee.
Okay, good.
So that's part of their role.
Great. Those reports will be very much appreciated.
You bet. You bet. Yeah, we have our, we have our cost updates with our subcontractors every month, so we'll know exactly where we are throughout the process. We'll be working with Dave on what he needs to know, on what payout schedule might be for each project, and keep everyone updated as best we can. If the board ever has any question as to where we are or needs additional information, we'll be more than willing to give that to Dave and whatever he needs.
So then, I think, Patrick, all we have to do is add a column that says cash paid, correct? So that we know which invoices have been paid since we're on the cash basis? I mean, we'll have, we'll receive invoices, which, in fact, do you provide the detail on that?
Yes, we do.
Correct?
A schedule, full schedule of values.
Okay. And then we receive those invoices, and then a check ultimately is cut, correct?
Each month, if the board approves bills.
Right.
It's all in, it's all comes in a financial way.
Right. But what I'm asking for is a little bit, rather by, you know, so that we can tie the budget to what we've paid out, to see what the cash flow, do we call this out?
You will see those numbers.
Okay. And the cash flow out?
Every subcontractor that's there. What we've done in the past, actually, is had a couple of board members come in at the monthly meetings, sit down with us, work with us on change requests, and also take a look at those numbers during the course of a monthly meeting with the CM, architect, and his team. And then we make a presentation at the BOE meeting, so you'll be seeing those numbers from this point forward.
What I'm really asking for is obviously those numbers, but I'm basically asking for the cash, we're going to get the invoices before we can pay the cash out the next day. So what I'm really asking for is that we have a schedule of what we pay on a monthly basis or every other month, so we can sort of see how does our, or will the, you know, how is it being paid? Are we right on track?
We're on track for, for, based on the budget, or based on what we, what the, because once the, correct me if I'm wrong on this, you guys, but once we get the invoices in, they then have to be approved by the board, and then Patrick, you've got your normal, your normal procedures that, yeah, to, the checks go out, so.
They come in as a pay request, the board approves pay request, and then the payment is issued. There's a, there's a whole front end in front of that where we have a pencil copy, so there's a preapproval of the pay request. So let's say, we say, a subcontractor says that the flooring is 50% complete, and we say, no, that's not right, it's 20% complete. There's that whole process that goes on at our monthly meetings to approve that. And the architects will go through that process as a third party and identify those areas, approve those. Once that's all approved, then it goes to the board for approval, and then the checks are issued, so.
And it's the same way with any change that we ask the CM to make during construction.
That's correct. It's all very transparent.
Well, we do have change orders, you're going to change this running total, correct? Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we need to keep track of.
Yeah, absolutely. There'll be a running change order tally, there'll be a full accounting every month of where we are with the project.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So once again, we're asking that you accept this bid tonight so we can begin construction.
And you say it's a little over budget?
No, it's not.
It's really not.
With contingencies.
With the contingency. It is well within the contingency.
We had a printout given to us back in December, and you were talking about it being a little over $2 million. Is that, so are we?
Let's make sure we're on the same project.
Yeah, let's make sure we're on the same. Is it all, is this what we're approving?
For Ball? Yes.
Total? This was our original estimate?
Right.
So we're under that?
Way under that. Well, that's going to, that number's going to include a lot of other things. It's going to include architect's fees, and it's going to include furniture, other items that aren't in the budget.
That aren't in this budget, aren't in this project.
Yeah, this is, this is construction budgets, and the design fees, and some of those other costs.
Oh, you were looking overall, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There were several.
Yeah.
At the work, and then there were renovations.
As best as was a big number.
What that also includes is furnitures and fixtures.
Well, that's the schedule I want currently.
Those for the new two board members? Those copies?
Where she'll go on.
Of that? Yeah. Can you get copies of those, Mike and Dave, for the two new board members?
I'll send them.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, but that's the schedule that I want to monitor carefully, that includes the furniture, you know, so we can look at the total, at the end of the page, we know exactly, okay, we had to buy furniture, we had to do this, we had to build the building. I want a hard number at the end of the day.
You'll see the hard number. This is just the construction portion of it.
Correct.
Perfect job. But the FF and E portion is currently just estimate?
Correct.
We have no bids.
That's fine. I just, I want a hard number.
Yes.
Yes. All bear viable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Need a motion then to approve the recommendation, accept O'Shea Builders for this building addition at Ball Elementary at $1,696,96 as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Linda. In a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Cuthbert?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Musis?
Yes. And next, we've got Glenwood Elementary, right, Dave?
Yeah, this actually, this project actually falls into the good news category of the board meeting. We actually received very good bids on this project overall. On the base bid project, we were approximately $400,000 below where the original budget was for the project, so we were able to pick up some additional money there, which is fantastic.
So that's in the first line there?
Yes.
The school additions, okay?
Yeah. Actually, I have a comparison, if we wanted to look at budget versus construction, current estimate, if we want to do that. And going through these numbers, basically, approximately $400,000 on, under on the base bid, which is fantastic. And that, again, is the full masonry extension to the existing school. There's a very fantastic, I guess I would say, HBAC system in that school, which is improved over what we have in the existing school even further. And then a lot of site work, and some, actually, a little bit of extra site work. And then we have some extra site work in our alternates that we've discussed with the board previously, for the roadway extension, the additional fill work associated with that, and concrete paving, and then concrete parking, that was an alternate as well. that, and concrete paving, and then concrete parking that was an alternate as well. We understand that you had asked us for those alternate bid numbers. We went out to the market to get those. They were very close to where we had budgeted those during design, and those two numbers are alternate two and alternate number three, which are right here. And the additional parking is over by the high school, if you remember. We talked about that. Do you, did the new board members see what that alternate...
Have we got that?
Will that help?
Have you got that here?
Especially the additional parking area.
Correct.
Yes, we do. We made a word check out there.
Probably the last board meeting. That's it?
Yeah, while Greg's looking at that, the basics of the elementary school addition are 14 classrooms, and that includes all the support and restroom facilities on three wings. Everybody knows six classrooms on A wing, which is the pre-K wing, and then on C and D, four classrooms plus restrooms and all the mechanical equipment rooms that Matt needs for his systems. One of the reasons I brought that question is the roadway drop-off is a significant number. You can tell there, but as everybody knows, we have quite a queuing issue at Glenwood every morning, so the previous board members will remember, anyone's will get to feel for this. Let's go forward. We'll show them that. Go back one, Greg, to the previous. Okay, so everyone, everyone knows, just quick synopsis, additions A, C and D, also, and this is all in that base bid number, that $4.2 million number that Greg talks about, also, this expansion, sort of flopping over this, that's all base bid work, okay? And then, go forward a little bit too, Greg. These are just some of the representations you can go, I want to show them that, each wing addition, and we can go, we can answer questions on these, but I think the bigger one is to go forward and, here we are. This is a large alternate, which is the extension through, around, connection back to the ring road, large cul-de-sac drop-off specifically for pre-K K and this connection. So this is going to allow us to queue about 60, 80 additional cars, and it's a lot of, that's, and correct me, Greg and Corey, that a lot of that also has earthwork numbers, cut and fill, because that's, everybody remembers from the existing building, this thing drops off like six or eight feet. So with your current property, we're bringing a lot, there's a lot of excavation that's involved with here, plus filling this, this sleeve is that alternate three, Greg, to add this parking lot, but we went ahead and added in on the second alternate that earthwork, because a lot of it needed to be done in this space anyway. So, again, that alternate two and three are this sleeve of parking, this road, this connection, the cul-de-sac, and then connecting up to the existing drop-off.
The cul, the drive from the cul-de-sac going south does connect up with the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, back to the, continuing that drop-off, that path will continue the way it does now.
Shaded areas.
It's a bad...
It represents removing what's existing.
Right.
And then connecting.
Yeah, it's a, it's bad slide, by me.
Now, the alternate parking area over by the high school?
This right here?
Correct. That will have landfill, dirt fill in it?
Yes.
Even if we don't put the parking on?
Correct. Because that's in part of two, knowing that somewhere down the line that will come in if we hadn't accepted it. Say the numbers had gone too high, then it was needed to do this, because again, there's a drop, and this is, when you come through here, this thing takes a big dip, so.
So if we don't accept additional parking area, it just means we wouldn't be accepting the surface ground?
We wouldn't do the concrete.
Dump the dirt there, but...
Right, yeah, but the dirt, because we have to address some of the drainage issues anyway. So that's why we do that as part of number two.
What's your guess on the concrete cost? I'm thinking just along the lines with Linda. How much, how much is the concrete for that?
Well, that's the number, that's alternate number three.
That's all of it.
And what's that number, Greg?
103.
Okay, $100,000.
It's a hundred thousand dollars. Number, and roughly, I think it was almost $80,000. Then we've got some testing to make sure we get the right base under the concrete parking lot, and all of the site lighting and all of the other numbers, earthwork numbers, are in with the roadway itself. So that's all part of that number two alternate for the roadway. So that parking lot will be eliminated off of the roadway lighting.
Greg makes a good point. That includes lighting all the way around, all the new ring roads, too.
So what would be eliminated? Say that again. You said something would be eliminated.
Illuminated.
Illuminated? Oh, that's, okay.
In other words, the alternate number three is paying for the concrete and the paving and striping for that extra sleeve of the parking lot?
Otherwise, it's just grass. We don't.
Otherwise, what is...
Now, it's just grass.
And we could do it later, maybe.
Certainly could do it later.
Correct.
If I remember our...
Not going to be any cheaper. That's exactly why we went ahead and put it out as an alt bid.
If I remember our previous discussion, we talked about, if that's a high school parking lot, attributing some of those costs to the high school budget instead of having it eat up the elementary school, so I don't know if that, it's money.
Right.
Right.
It's from different projects.
Right.
Same dollar, same bottom line, but same...
Same bottom line with different projects, but if there's 400, this, 400,000, the good news on the addition and the construction piece of it, that goes a long way in funding the road and lot the way that we want it, and some of the lot is attributed to a different building, so the original number for the basis of this is almost covering all of the, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, you're reading that correctly, yes. And the other, the other good thing about this, this is part, my involvement here from the original master plan of the whole campus, remember, is this ring road to come around, and also to this extent, to go out and go around to Iron Bridge. So we're going, we're going ahead and taking care of part of that right now. Future planning, since the market is good and it's helped us out here, we can put that in place right now. That's goodness.
It's part of our goals to be looking forward to make sure that what we're doing is buildable in the future, consistent with our goal.
Rick, though, are you, because our bonds are being sold in increments, and the high
school bonds are down the line. Are you saying that that parking lot should be considered part of the high school?
What's parking lot for?
What's it for?
Is that for the high school?
Actually, it's a shared parking lot, because it's almost as close to go this direction as it is this direction. So it would be shared.
That would be used during athletic events?
Oh, were you suggesting, though, that it should be included with the high school?
No. No, it was just a suggestion. I mean, it's just how we wanted to budget it versus, one versus the other. And depending on what, you know, what kind of a bottom line we're looking at, oh, when are we going to sell those other bonds, or a couple of years, right, I think?
Sold one in January.
And we're, you know, if you take everything right now that we've talked about, which is money that we've already, of bonds we've already sold for the projects we're already talking about, we're under the amount of money that we've already sold on those bonds, because...
By that much?
Well, we don't, we have to get, we haven't approved everything yet, and we have to make sure, but, you know, if you look at this, this was $400,000 under what, what our estimate was, and all those estimates went together to come up with what the bond, what the bond issue was, so, you know, we're $100,000 on a couple of these projects we were under. We're over by 100,000, so kind of a net zero, even though it's two different buildings. So it just, to answer your question, I don't know yet. I don't think you guys know yet either, but until we get...
That would be a good running total as well.
Well, absolutely.
I like the running total. We're here, we're there, we're over here, but we're under here, so net we're doing okay. I would like that. I think that's very, it's a very good overview.
So...
What is the negative to wait and put this parking lot in as part of the G H S building project?
The negative is, it's hard to predict construction costs. Right now, we're buying concrete very cheaply. That could change overnight. And we're, we're doing real well on our bidding. Construction market is soft, and as a consequence, we're getting good bids in. That could change as the economy changes. And I'm not, I can't predict that, but we're hoping that happens over the next couple of years. And right now, with the way bids are coming in, and the cost of money, a pretty good time to construct.
If you'd look at your base bid, which is the 4.2 million, was 400,000 under what the estimate was, and this is a guaranteed maximum price, right? So you've already got, even if you spend $100,000, you're still $300,000 under what your base bid is for, with those two, for your, for those two projects. And I remember, well, and the roadway was pretty close to that, wasn't it, when, for the estimate?
Yeah. Right, right on the number.
It's pretty close to what we thought.
So, you know, you're still $300,000 under what the estimates were for that, and it's a guarant, like you said, like Dave said earlier, it's a guaranteed price, so. And contingencies are still in this and that sort of thing, so depending on how all that comes out, it may even be more, be farther under, so.
So the 100,000, 103,000 for additional parking is just for that shared space between the two schools?
Correct.
It doesn't include that extra that was being added at G E S?
The ring road?
The extra is included in that base?
That's part of the base.
That's in the base, right?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Do we need extra parking somewhere, other than athletic events on a daily basis?
No, I think the times when you need them are probably when, you know, Tammy has an open house, but then that flip, that mirror of the parking lot is there now, should handle that for now.
Yes.
You know, it's more of a future thinking. You know, I think that as far as when we'll need more parking space, when we'll have to use that, I think it's more of a conversation about the future, but thinking that we would get a better price for it now than in the future is what we've been kicking around.
And if they're hauling concrete in now, as opposed to adding it to the, you know, if we've got extra money at the end of the project, it's, you know, I would imagine incremental pricing is less now, to bring more in now as opposed to bringing it in at the end of the project when they're done with this part of it and they're coming back.
How many spots is it? Do you remember?
Eighty new additions spaces.
Eighty?
In that one?
In Alt 3. Okay.
Yeah, in the alternate three, that's right.
Actually, in the base bid.
In the base bid, there's another 80, but then I can't remember what's in the Alt 3.
I don't remember what's in Alt 3.
The other reason to consider this parking lot now?
I think it's like 60.
Is it? Okay.
What you're not seeing tonight, you will see within the next year, is 14 more classrooms added to the high school. So when that happens, there's going to be a need for more parking space. And our parking space for the kids is getting very tight, and if you add a few more teachers, we need the space. We need the space not only for daytime activities, but for nighttime activities. Our parents are parking out on the streets.
Just take away the financial impact of additional cost of the concrete and the dirt work and things. Really, as far as building goes, and especially the parking lot out front and all the grading that's going to go on in front, the nice thing is we're going to try and hit most of that this summer before school actually gets started. So a lot of the disruption associated with that construction, we're going to try and get out of the way as quickly as we can. And other things that you don't really think about too often as far as, you know, taking dirt from where the parking lot is going to go, and we're going to use it to fill in for the classroom wings and things like that. So there's more of a big picture to the overall site balance on cuts and fills, that we're going to be using that dirt in other places. So the overall disruption and dirt moving and all that process happens this summer, which is much easier to do all of that at once than doing that in small pieces. You know, that's one of the reasons why we're going to go ahead and fill in for that parking lot.
Right.
We just don't want to have a hole there later to deal with. This is the overall summary of the projects, including the alternates. So 406,000 to the good, another 14,000 on the bleachers, and then the additional cost of the alternates is listed here. The overall net, given that added scope, is 145,000, but there's also, within that number, there's a large contingency for this project, and that contingency is $276,000 of contingency that we're holding right now on this project, so. The good bidding climate certainly did help with that additional 400,000, so. Any further questions?
Questions?
So, when all is said and done, if we do the parking lot and we take it out of the contingency, we still have about 131,000 left in the contingency, correct?
Correct. Yeah. That's what adding all of that's doing, so.
And that sounds pretty good to you, Dave?
Which, Dave?
She asked me, the answer is yes. Yeah, the answer is yes, absolutely. We feel confident.
Any other questions?
Anything you want to add? Nothing? Okay. No other questions, then? Need a motion? Let me get back here. So the administrative recommendation on this is for $5,4,705 for the building addition and all alternates as provided this evening. And that would be the, alternate one was for the additional drive-up for pre-K wing of the building and the ring road, sorry?
Actually, alternate one's bleachers in the...
Oh, I'm sorry, alternate one is bleachers.
Alternate two would be the ring road, the...
And then alternate three is the parking lot.
Is the parking, that's correct.
Thank you.
Well, we've decided we want to go ahead and do the bleachers, get them. I mean, are we needing them in that school?
There are no bleachers in...
There's nothing there.
Chatham Elementary don't feel, no.
Because they don't have bleachers.
They don't really have very much space for bleachers at Chatham Elementary.
It's not the same gym configuration, really, because it goes right out of the wall.
That's true. However, when this, this building was designed, if you think back, we built it for community use, and that's the reason we have all those doors that open up to the gym.
And that's just going to make it a lot more accessible for community use.
They can use it for Y V A games, and, you know...
Well, what that does for...
She can use it for assemblies or...
...pressure on the other buildings.
Well, we cut the bleachers. We had originally intended to have bleachers, and we had to cut them for economics.
We also, I mean, if you, I went to the first grade concert the other day, and they had to put tarps on the floor so that they could put chairs for parents to sit on the floors, and it took probably several of your guys quite some time to put the tarps down.
And put chairs directly on the floor, so they could put masonite, take masonite down before we could have...
So instead, she could have parents sit in the bleachers and watch the students, you know, rather than spend all that time and that manpower to put those tarps down to protect the floor and then put the chairs down, and, you know, just...
What does Y V A do? Do we have Y V A games?
They don't have games there, no. They use it for practicing, but again, we have a struggle with it because sometimes parents want to bring in bleacher, or chairs from the cafeteria and sit on them, on the floor, you know, while they're watching their children play, which is a natural thing for parents to want to sit, and then, you know, it scratches up the floors, so that's another issue that would be alleviated if bleachers were in there, because they could just sit in the bleachers.
What does, what does Chatham do? I mean, Chatham parents go to concerts?
They don't have the same floor. They have the, just tile.
Tile floor.
So you can put chairs out there. Kim, you usually put chairs out on...
We have our hallways in cafeteria.
Cafeteria, mostly.
But I'm doing it...
Right, but that's tile, too.
Cafeteria.
Right.
And at Ball, same thing?
There are bleachers at Ball.
Mm-hmm.
Old bleachers.
Old bleachers.
Old bleachers, but they hold up well, those old bleachers.
They have.
They do, they've been a beating, got this much paint on them, I think.
All right. Any other questions?
What's the disadvantage of delaying the bleachers? What's the disadvantage for delaying the bleachers?
We, we gave a heck of a price on bleachers, right, Greg?
Yeah.
It was 20-some thousand under, what?
14,000.
14,000 under? Okay, sorry.
Bleachers like in Rochester.
Yeah, no kidding.
No.
And they're not retractable, right? Or are they retractable? They are retractable.
Not quite as tall. No way as much. We don't.
And what do you deal with the floor, then, with the, if the bleachers are retractable, when you pull them out, how do you?
Rubber wheels is fine, okay. Good question.
I'd like to go ahead and make that motion to approve the bid is accepted with the alternate one, two, and three included.
Okay, thank you. In a second. Thank you, Brandon. And call the roll, please.
Yes, Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Alisson.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes.
Neuses.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Dave, we've got HVAC performance.
Yeah, last, last month, a question was brought up about performance, and tonight I asked Matt Slager to present a little PowerPoint to explain to you the efficiencies that we're going to garner from new systems, and talk a little bit about not only efficiencies, but also about performance, so, Matt?
Those are the, no, me, Matt Slager with Hanson Professional Services. We're doing the, all the plumbing HVAC, structural, all the engineering, all the schools and facilities.
Well, it needs to get somebody X'd out.
Is it on, is it off here?
It's on mine, I can run it, if, if you, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, last month, I was asked a question, sort of caught off guard a little bit, on what's the percent efficiency of the system? And it's not really a simple answer, so, you know, I went back and sort of regrouped, and I want to kind of give you guys the right answer to this, so that you guys fully understand what you're getting. Because we, we believe it's a good system, you're getting, you know, excellent HVAC systems, and I want you guys to feel the same way. So, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the systems are heat pumps that are being put in the school. You know, it's not like it's a, you know, gas fire boiler that we're replacing, and it's going from 60% efficient to 80% efficient or 90% efficient boiler. You know, so it's, it's not a straightforward sort of, oh, you're just 10% more efficient than the boiler. Because it's a heat pump system, you know, the heat pump system, if you guys aren't familiar with it, you know, it works like an air conditioner. Your air conditioner pumps heat from inside your house to outside your house. Well, in the winter, it works in reverse, pumps heat from outside to inside to heat your house. And so when you talk about efficiency, we rate them with coefficient of performance, is how they're referred to. You can, you can call that a percent efficiency, but with the heat pump, when you put one unit of energy in, you get like four units out, so when you look at heat output divided by input, you know, you're seeing efficiencies of 200 to 600%. So we usually refer to those coefficient of performance, because it just makes more sense to people, rather than saying it's 400% efficient. So, electric efficiency, for example, is 100% efficient because everything you put in, you can help with this heat. Gas heat, you know, boiler might be 80 to 95% efficient, it'd be a CFP of something less than one. Heat pump technology, the efficiency varies depending on a number of factors, which we'll talk about in a second, but it ranges anything from CFP of 2 to 6, depending on the season and whatnot. You know, 200 to 600% efficiency. So, you know, what affects that efficiency? It's mostly just outside air temperature, or where you're trying to pump the heat from. And when it's warm out, the thing doesn't have to work as hard to pump heat out of that outside air to inside your building to heat it. And in addition to that, you know, it's, you have considerations for efficiency, or you know, how much ventilation you're putting in buildings. The new schools require a lot more ventilation than what the old codes did 20 years ago when the other schools were built. So you have, you're getting a lot more outside air in there, and it takes a lot of energy to condition that air, so even though the systems might be a lot more efficient, you're having to work a little harder. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult to say, you know, that your new school might use a lot less energy than your old one, because, you know, there's some factors that balance out. It's like buying a car that's, gets a higher MPG, but you're going to drive it more miles. Yeah, it's more efficient than anything else you could have picked, but, you know, you're going to net out some air savings with the additional load to put on it. And so one of the other factors of this variable refrigerant flow system is the heat recovery. And the systems that are going in have the ability to heat and cool different rooms in the building at the same time, which I'll talk about more towards the end, but, you know, the heat recovery set, you know, if I take heat out of one room and cool it, I can put it in another room for free, essentially. So all those factors make it a little bit complicated to say, I know, you know, the efficiency is X for this equipment, because it really kind of varies by the application. But, and it also varies by the school, because some of your schools are putting air-cooled equipment in, and some of them are geothermal, like GPS. And so that affects the heat sink. You know, with ground source, for example, the temperature's a lot more moderate in the ground, you're going to see water temperatures, you know, the coolest is going to get us at 40 degrees. So obviously, it's a lot more efficient pumping heat out of something that's 40 degrees versus zero degree outside. This, you know, this is just sort of a typical breakdown of energy consumption of a typical school or climate zone. And the only thing I want to point out here is that, like, only about half of the energy is actually HVAC energy. The other half is plug load, people using computers and things, and lighting and water heating, so when you talk about these percent savings, you're really just talking about the HVAC energy usage, which is about half of what a school is. Ball Elementary School and Glenwood Intermedia School are air-source systems, so like I said, the efficiency is impacted by outside air temperature. If you factor in all the things, a good estimate is about an average seasonal CFP of about 3.5. So if you try to compare that roughly to what an 80% efficient gas boiler would be, you end up with energy cost savings of about 25%. You know, because it's not just efficiency, you got to look at, you know, electric's more expensive per gigawatt energy than gases, but, you know, when you're talking about 350% efficiencies, it balances out to about a 25% energy cost savings on the heat side. And if you look at the cooling, you're looking at 37 to 45% savings roughly over sort of the minimum code-compliant system. So, very, very efficient systems from a, from a cost standpoint. Glenwood Elementary School is very similar systems, it's variable refrigerant flow, but instead of connecting with a condensing unit outside, we hook it to the ground like the rest of the school. So it's, it's similar to the rest of the school, and then it's geothermal, but it's sort of applied a different way with a variable refrigerant flow system. And here, you probably see efficiencies of something like a seasonal average of about 5.5 COP, and that, you know, sort of translates into, again, our comparison versus like a minimum efficient boiler, about 55% heat, heating cost savings, and your cooling savings are probably on the order of 50 to 60%. But, you know, energy cost is only a part of it. I mean, really, the reason you do this is to make people comfortable, to make it a good learning environment. And so, you know, one of the reasons these systems were chosen really is, is good indoor air quality, good sound, good temperature control. We talk about indoor air quality, you know, all the ventilation is now coming from, will be coming from ventilation units on the roof, as opposed to like unit ventilators. And that's, I don't want to downplay that, because if you go out there and open the intake on those unit vents, Dave will attest to this, you'll find bugs, you'll find rodents, you'll find all kinds of stuff in there. And that's where your ventilation for your kids is coming from. And that's not heating to your district, it happens all over the country. But putting them on the roof is a good thing, it gets some of those allergens, it gets it away from some of the pollen, the bugs, and all that stuff. So you're getting cleaner air pulling in our building. In addition to that, that centralized equipment on the roof has better filtration, so you're going to filter out, you know, 60 to 80% of the stuff that does make it up there, and get rid of a lot of the allergens for the kids. Also, it's going to break humidity levels down, you know, which is, it's good for the learning environment. From a noise standpoint, they'll be quieter than the old unit vents were. The, sort of along those lines of the ventilation, also, these unit ventilators, they're just not built very well, they never were. A lot of districts are tearing them out now because the dampers were leaky, it's no different here. You know, when it gets 20 degrees outside, the kids are cold, you know, as a result, you don't want kids to get cold there, so what do you do? Shut the ventilation off. Solves the temperature problem, but you're not really getting the ventilation that you really should have, so these renovations sort of fix that issue as well. And then improved temperature control, and this is one of the big ones, you know, if somebody's uncomfortable, they're not going to perform as well. And so, you know, take, for example, Ball Elementary School, the system that's in there now, the whole school is either heating or it's a cooling. And you can, every room has a predulation, but, you know, when the sun's shining on one side of the building, they might be hot, and the other side of the building might be cold. Well, the new system's not that way. Every room has individual temperature control, over mode, and temperature, so students and teachers should be much more comfortable with the new system, and that ultimately is what's important to a good learning environment. And then predictable energy costs, I mean, everybody knows natural gas has been up, it's been down, it's coming back up. Electricity is a fairly stable commodity, has been, it's, you know, down a little bit recently, but it's, long-term, it's been a lot more stable, so, you know, with heat pumps, you can have more predictable energy levels, which is, which is a good one. Any questions?
Thank you.
That's all we've got.
Any, are there any questions? Any?
I just had one, kind of, I was only a spectator at the meeting prior, or the two meetings ago, I can't remember what it was, but unless I misinterpreted, I think one of the reasons the question came up, just generically about efficiency, was when we were looking at some of Patrick's information comparing schools, and one of our largest spending schools was this brand-new school with the brand-new HVAC system, and we had ready to replace them. And I can't remember, and Dave, you may know, what the reasoning was, like, for instance, I'm looking at GES from, what, 2013, and they were $63,281 over budget, and I remember everyone talking about that being a utility issue, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know. I think that's where the efficiency questions came from, because you're just, you know, you have a brand-new school with a brand-new HVAC system, you would think it would be our cheapest school in terms of utilities, so I didn't know if there was any clarification there.
That's exactly right. That was exactly our question.
And I think you asked for some more clarification on what those numbers were. I think Dave can speak to that, about the budgets of the schools, the energy cost.
Well, energy costs, what impacts the energy cost is the improvement in air quality. Okay, right now, like Matt told you, in, in the middle of winter, when it's cold out, we have to do something that we don't really want to do. We have to turn the, the ventilation that's required, we have shut it off. And the reason why we have to do that is if we don't, the dampers leak so much, you remember what it was like in those classrooms? The person closest to the unit ventilator freezes, and the ones over against the wall are warm until that cold air hits them, because it takes that long for that, that cold air to move to the, to the wall. So it's very inefficient, and, and not only is it inefficient, the, the damper systems are worn out, the filtration systems.
Well, I guess what I'm not understanding, though, is if it were inefficient, the cost should be higher, and the inefficient schools are cheaper.
It's going to, it's probably going to cost us more money, but the reason that it's going to cost us more money is because the laws have changed, the codes have changed for ventilation requirements, which we now have to meet anytime we make any changes. So I suspect we're going to see an increase in costs, but the performance is going to increase as well. So, increase, help me out here, Matt.
It was a big increase, though, big difference, like 98,000.
Sixty.
Well, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
Because that, that $50,000 budget number, that was a swag, and it was mine, I own that. I didn't have the building energy modeling that would support what it would actually cost me for the first year of operation, so I said, okay, I want to guess, I want $50,000, that's the number to plug in. I was way sure. That's my fault.
So you're saying that, that GES is, costs more because it has better air control than the others?
Correct.
And that as we improve the others, that utility cost will go up as well?
Well, the laws have changed. They, it used to be we could bring in 15% air. Now it may be as high as 25% air.
Yeah, the ventilation that's required is like four times what it was two decades ago.
And that, that's because the environment inside the space was uncomfortable, you were recirculating germs, and, and to overcome that, we have to introduce more fresh air.
Did you say earlier that you turn off the HVAC systems in the wintertime?
I'm sorry, Lisa?
Did you say before that you turn off the HVAC when it's cold out?
Not, not the heating and cooling, but the ventilation portion, when you bring in the outside air into the classroom to bring fresh air in.
Oh.
You know, instead of trying to heat that zero-degree air.
You're just recirculating air instead of adding fresh air.
At your house, you need to bring some fresh air into your home to keep the environment conducive to good health, and it's the same way with, with schools. Only the guidance for schools, the ventilation requirements have changed so much in the past 10 years, and you say it's.
It's roughly four times what it was. Now, the new ventilation units have energy recovery on them, so if there's a wheel there that's going to recover energy, it sort of minimizes the impact of that extra ventilation there. So if you think about that. Extra cost.
I'm sorry, Matt, I don't mean to step on you.
No, sir.
We're taking zero-degree air and introducing it to the space, but before we can introduce it to the space, we have to heat it, cool it, to introduce it to the space, at what's called neutral air, which is about 70 degrees.
Do you, you're just saying that by recirculating the air, it's cheaper?
Yes.
Right.
Were you to just recirculate?
Right. That's why, that's why utility cost, the utility costs are that significant.
Would it be fair to say, then, for the addition for Glenwood High School, can, can you grandfather in the old code, or do you have to, when you add on to Glenwood, for example, do you have to put it?
That's a good question for my engineer.
If you're modifying the systems or putting new systems in, you've got to be building code, no question about it. And I think you really want to, I mean, ultimately, it's about the students and their learning environment, you know?
Well, I'm worried about the money, but, you know.
No, I just, you got to balance both of them, but you really don't have a choice when you put new equipment in or replace the equipment. It's got, you've got to.
We've done some major renovations at the high school in all of that HVAC equipment we've got there, right? In the last few years?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to jump in.
Yeah.
What I hear the basics of, we have to move a heck of a lot more air than we ever used to. New systems, though, use energy recovery in ways to try to make that movement of air more efficient. Okay, so the new systems are more efficient than, I'm not speaking out of school here, Matt.
No.
But you're still required by law, every year it's going to get the same more to keep the air. So we're pushing a lot more air in and out of buildings. But we're using energy recovery, it's called ERVs, ERUs, to help recapture as much of that to make the system more efficient. But as you go bigger, energy costs will go up. And there's no, when we have more space to heat and cool.
As, as we change systems, we have to, the new codes apply, and we can't deviate from the code. So when you, new energy code came out, what, 2010, 2019? Architects, they can tell you that building envelopes have changed. They can tell you that the insulating values on, on the constructions have changed, that they can no longer put in this much insulation, it's got to be this much insulation. So, that's all good things, but it costs money, and the ventilation requirements cost us money in energy usage, but it's really good for the, the health of the building and health of the children.
And we had no choice.
Any other questions about energy and energy systems? This is a good system. At all these schools are great systems.
So I think part of what you're saying, too, is that efficiency is not just measured in how much we spend, it's measured in the quality of the air that is produced.
The impact on.
And how it works, as far as.
On the people who are residing inside the space. Much improved. And, Kim, Matt talked about the, the ventilation that came in, how the unit ventilators, one of the first projects we did three years ago, we opened up one of the unit ventilators, and it's got a grill on the outside. You remember what those looked like?
Like, next to the ground.
We opened it up, and it was full this high with carcasses, bugs, pretty nasty. That's your fresh air, because it's brought in at that level, okay? Not so fresh.
Okay, thank you. It was for information only, I'm sure we'll come back with, with other details on it as we, as we get them for the different systems, the buildings, so. Next, we have, we have an IT redundancy, new desktop towers, so, Chan?
Thanks, guys. So if you remember back in December, the big letter, so on board, and the new ones, we bought about 100 desktops to replace them with the clients that were in classrooms to combat what was a problem with our active boards in the older models areas, not being able to perform like they should, basically dropping off the virtual environment solutions that coming back, and we reset them. So what we're trying to do here is, we're going to purchase another, we're looking to purchase another 300 desktop computers, and the same company that we bought through last night. Basically alleviates more of those problems with other parts of that new drive solution that we've seen in the past. Basically, what happened to be, surveyed the entire school district internally, based on what actions and what problems that we've had over the last year with the professional technology department, and what kind of things that they still see as being a problem. Out of that survey of what was 800-some staff members, 123 responded. 91 of them responded that they need to improve the equipment functionality is the highest priority that we should have as the IT department right now. That through, 93 of the 123 responded that their issues involved directly with hardware-related issues with the virtual environment, mainly the thin clients that we have on the computers. So this 300 computers is basically going to replace thin clients in the teacher stations in all the classrooms to give them the functionality of having their active boards, their active boards, video functionality in full screen, and be able to play DVD straight from their computer. That's what we're proposing here. Over the past years, I've been constantly working with both Wyse and Citrix to alleviate these issues on the thin clients themselves that have been over this before. They basically have told us that those thin client boxes going forward will not be able to push the full-screen video the way that they originally told us they would. That is why we're still looking at doing replacement for just these computers in teachers' classrooms. The redundancy in this is that by having those towers in the classroom allows us to trust to have redundant solution where if that thin client does go down, they've got another method to actually still access the internet, still access their sky, or anything that they need to do in the classrooms. Basically, it's also providing consistency for all the buildings to have the same classroom setup, no matter what building you're in. Right now, GES, I created a solution over there that allows them to stream the desktop to towers that we used to use in all the labs, and incurred no cost of that by just switching back to those. And at CES and the DES and some of the other buildings, the ones with the older active boards, we're able to put those 100 towers up there to get them situated where they're in the same mode as GES was. The last part of this is just getting these 300 desktops out there to replace anything else that is having those same issues with the streaming video, the streaming active boards, anything that had that type of functionality, to just return that functionality to them for the future years. The source of these funds, actually what we did is they like to not update what was called the subscription advantage on our Citrix licensing, which would just allow us to grab a new version of the same Citrix software that is going to use for it. The price of that was $48,000. The price of buying these, as you can see, is real close to that same number. So basically, we're just repurposing money back into something that we can put in the classroom that we know is functioning and working.
And we don't need the Citrus upgrade?
Right now, it's basically a staple where it is right now. The VDI portion of it, which is the thin desktop part, was the part that we had purchased into and had subscription advantage going forward. Right now, it'll stay at what it is right now, which is, you know, the best version that we've seen out there. And going forward, we'll continue to use that same version years ago.
And there was no offer reimbursement after they told us that this thin client...
We actually looked at the option of using a hospital nearby that does run Citrix to offload those thin clients. Nothing came out, and by the time we were all set done with it, so, I mean, I looked at other avenues. The office from Wyse, the problem was that Wyse got bought out, the problem was that basically about halfway through the year after you bought the Wyse units. And by the time I got through to the computer and really deep down into it, they basically said, you just can't help it there. The device that you bought won't be able to do what you expected it to do, which was kind of the other part of this being that none of the representatives that were before there from Wyse, Wyse and Citrix were no longer with either one of the companies, which gave us really no pathway to say, you know, this person told us it would do this, and, you know, now you're talking this far.
This will solve our active board problems, which we've had for two years now. Which we've heard comments on. Many. From our friends and the community and our teachers and the kids that it's been an issue for quite some time. There's no questions? And the recommendation is to purchase desktop towers to replace teach computers from in-site investments for a total, and it's 300 computers, for a total of $48,225 as presented this evening. Need a motion to approve that?
Is that something we have to put out for bed, or is that...
Technology, you do not...
Yeah, it falls in with technology. The reason why we went with this company is that we had already used them before, and they had the same file, desktop, which allowed us to use the same drivers and things of that sort of thing.
Or like thought and services, professional services.
It's $156 a unit, is that right?
Yeah.
I don't know what's at work, nothing. Oh, they are. Yeah, they're used to it.
Yeah, the other part is we'll still look for options to get rid of those thin clients in the long run. I mean, right now, we just need to get something functional for them to be able to use their active boards and their direct quarters.
Needs to be up and running by the, by next fall?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? And again, I need a motion to approve the purchase of these items as described.
I'm glad you got an exchange of funds there.
Yeah. I'll make that motion. Okay, thank you. A second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Linda. And call the rule, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chad. And let's see, on item nine here, calendar change.
We need to make a calendar change. The state, because our Easter falls super late in April, they changed the PSAE test. We originally had a school improvement day scheduled for April 24th, and because the Friday and Monday, most schools in the state of Illinois are taking those two days off that surround Easter that weekend, we need to move. It would be a great day to take off the 24th because it's Take Your Child to Work Day. However, PSAE, the state moved PSAE testing back, and so we need to move it up a week. So we did make a change. This is not good testing conditions just to have the juniors in attendance on that day, the 24th, with everyone else out. We need to make this change.
So we would change that?
Yeah, we're going to move April 24th to April 7th.
Okay, because testing.
And that will allow our families to leave at noon that day for that long weekend as well.
Okay.
The state did not make this change until the end of November, so we'd already approved our calendar.
Any questions? No? Okay, I need a motion then to approve the, this change in the calendars described this evening?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Steve, in a second. Lisa, Lisa, second. Thank you. Call the rule, please.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Jesus?
Yes. Rising Star update?
I've continued to keep you up to date on all of the state requirements, and this is one that's coming our way due to, you know, we're in the end status, they're not depending on test scores next year. The six principals and I went to a two-day training last week, and we learned all about the new school improvement process that the state's going to require. And it has 50 district indicators and 104 school indicators. And what's interesting, and we went in, I will be honest with you, we went a little bit nervous because we've heard some horror stories from some of the schools that are currently in this process with Rising Star, and we found out the do's and don'ts. And what's interesting is that we, and this is all through the interactive school report card. This used to be housed by NIU, and this has been for years. And so they've migrated to this system, the Rising Star. And so all of our district data is on Rising Star, that NIU data, all the ISAT scores, PSAE scores, ACT scores. They also have, and Chad and I are looking into this data warehouse, where we can also put all of our other formative assessment scores in there as well. But what we learned is that you don't sit down with a team of people and go through all 104 indicators at a building level. You would go through slowly 11 indicators at a school level and work through that school improvement process and prioritize. So you would take an indicator, and I can go into more detail over the summer as we study it, but you go through an indicator, and it's based on research, and you would say, where is it, and how do we prioritize this? But it's all based on research. And we learned a lot of things in those two days. We also talked about, from a strategic standpoint, at our district level, that it would be right into our strategic plan as well. And so I will take the 15 district indicators and look at how it would support the work that you've already started with Larry Dirks, and so we're excited about that. We also liked the reporting, there's eight different reports. We thought about, you know, which reports would be good for a board to look at quarterly, at a quarterly, you know, and to see where we are school-wise and where our building is at. So there are some unanswered questions, a lot of data input, which, you know, with note-taking and things like that for our meetings, but we would like to fit it into our team structure. Right now, we'd like to fit it into our department coordinators and team leaders doing this. And so I think it's very doable, but we're just going to have to learn how to prioritize. And I told the principals that I would be their role coaches, and so they've quoted me on that. We are going to go through one more day of training on May 30th, and that entire day for the seven of us will be based on data and how we're getting data. So we're excited. What we are lucky to have in this county is we have a Larry Zobrist and Chuck Chenni who work at ROE who are very willing to come out and are so close that they can help us with this as well. So we're excited. We're, you know, slowly starting to feel good about it. So I just wanted to let you know that this is going to be coming our way. I think the two-page school improvement plan will probably look a little different next year.
Did you say they're not using the NIU anymore?
Well, they are. It's housed at NIU. They've migrated everything to this Rising Star.
Okay, so if you go into the interactive report card, you...
And it has a whole district dashboard for us when we all log in. A district dashboard and then a building dashboard. So I do think that we're headed the right way, but we're going to keep looking at it and look at those indicators. So there'll be more information, I would say, in July on that. But we just wanted to keep you in the loop. The next exciting thing that I want to talk about, just to give you some information, I have someone that I'm going to bring up here in just a minute, is our Gen H C4 initiative. And I know right now that you could only do some brain break, but we're going to keep going.
Let's get through your next question.
Well, we ought to do that. We ought to make a week of something.
Jill, let me just make sure that nobody had any questions on the Rising Star.
No, I'm sorry. Keep it going.
No? Okay.
We are under a thunderstorm warning, and so we're...
But we're safe in here, aren't we?
Brad is like, no, you're not.
We've had some wonderful support with Gen H, and the purpose of Gen H is to protect and nurture the health of children and families. And during this Gen H, over the years, that Kenia has been involved, we've done brain breaks, we've done health fairs, we've done destination dinner tables, recess before lunch, healthy snacks, Healthy Seeds Garden Project, the School Wellness Team, the Jump Perch Event for K-5, and et cetera. So I can just go on and on and on. And so I talked to Dr. Kenia, Mr. Roth, about all the new federal guidelines that are coming our way on calorie restrictions, and that we are no longer going to be able to heat and serve lunch, and that we're in the need of additional help to look at the quality of calories as well as the quantity of calories. And so she was able to create the chefs creating cafeteria classrooms, that's where the C4 comes into play. And so we've been introducing new foods to our students and have them vote as well as assist us in naming them. I will tell you that Kenia and her staff have worked side-by-side with our cafeteria staff in developing menus for next school year. More importantly, I would say that the whole learning curve, there was a learning curve on both, and sometimes it was steep, but the professional learning and professional development for our cafeterias has been just the top, very tough. She has done some inventory audits, she's had her staff work with our staff side-by-side on how we can become more efficient in preparing those lunches. And so I can't say enough, I don't think we could have done this without her help, to be honest with you. So I'm going to let her talk just a little bit. I told her she didn't have very much time. She has been sitting for an hour.
It seems like invariably I come here, and my husband is out of town, and some of my kids are kind of alone, setting fire to the house or...
She's been out with you.
So I'm sitting over there watching the clock, watching the storm move across Illinois. But I just wanted to, first of all, take a second to say thank you. Thank you to the district office, to Jill, to Mrs. Ruby. Congratulations.
Thanks, Kim.
And really, just to the staff that we've gotten to work with in the school district. You know, I've been doing this for five, almost five years now. When we started, we knew that the food piece was the most important piece. It just is that simple. You cannot out-exercise a bad diet. And the data that tells us that our children are being poorly nourished in school during the school day, and that the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program is a direct contributor not only to the childhood obesity epidemic, but to a lot of other health consequences that we're seeing in our kids internally. Even our children who are a little ill-vitae and don't have any difficulty with their weight, we know that internally their batteries are suffering from these very highly processed, heavily refined calories that they're consuming. And as I always say, anyone who questions me on this, it will send you a stack of data like this that supports that assertion. No one can argue with the data that's out there right now. So when I got the call from the district office in December saying, can you help, I did my dance, and I did my little dance again, and then I told my staff, I said, this is big, this is the biggest thing we've ever been offered the opportunity to do. Anyone want to quit? And nobody did then. And so we got started, and over the Christmas break, we developed this whole program, just kind of out of thin air, snatching things that we knew we wanted to do. And I will admit that I knew that I had a little extra leeway because we have such a supportive district, and I knew that we were going to screw up in certain places along the way because it's inevitable. And we certainly have not done this perfectly, but we've done it well. And your staff hasn't done this perfectly, but they've done it well. And together, we have created a program wherein your cafeteria staff come next fall, we're going to be cooking from scratch every day. That's amazing. That is astonishing. And in our last in-service, not only were they comfortable with the idea that they'd be doing lunches, but they stayed after to figure out what they were going to do for breakfast on their own, of their own accord. And I find that to be a real testament, testimony to not only their commitment to this, but also to the fact that they're seeing that this actually can be done. I actually asked my staff and my volunteers, because, you know, we're about 50/50, to log their hours that they personally were putting into this, and we, as a last count, have capped over 300,000 hours just on us that we've put into getting this done. It is, I mean, it makes me do this with my head, to look at the ordering systems and all of the different things that go into obtaining government foods, and it's absurd how complex this is. I never would have expected it, honestly, going in. Again, I will say that, you know, it really is a testimony to the staff who stuck it out with us, as well as to, Dr. Pedrangi really deserves huge kudos because she has slogged her way through this process, this ordering process. I think in the final analysis, we will save you money. I can't guarantee it, Susan, but I think we will save you money. And I say that because we've found places where we can cut. In any system, there's waste built in. And when we went in, we evaluated the kitchens, we evaluated the way things were being done, we identified those areas of waste, and so we're teaching the staff how to be much, much more efficient with the time that they already have. They thought they couldn't do it without hiring extra people. We taught them that they can. We did compile an equipment list, but it's a very, very modest one, frankly. You know, well under $10,000 for everything that we need for all five schools. So I think that that's a pretty nice deal. And I secured $2,000 to help purchase the knives that the staff needs in order to do their jobs more efficiently as well. And then the final thing is that in ordering commodities, there was, you know, a lot of waste, again, and we have shifted commodity orders, we have made deals where commodities like the 37,000 pounds of turkey can be stored for a period of time, and things can be done that I think will ultimately end up saving the district money. At the very least, as of right now, we're a zero-sum game, as far as I can tell. And the kids really love it. I mean, most important thing, you know, when we started this process, the biggest question we kept getting asked was, well, the kids won't eat it. We're so afraid the kids will go back to this classroom hungry, on and on. The kids have no problem with it. The kids have no problem with this. The only people that have a problem are the adults in the children's lives. Okay? The kids are eating it, they love the raw vegetables, they love naming the new things, they're enjoying the taste testing of most things. And the stuff, the thing is, we're very flexible. So the stuff that comes back and the numbers drop, and we either change the way the recipe is formulated, or we pitch it and we put something else in. There's lots and lots and lots of foods out there that we can teach everyone to make in short order. We've put a lot of time and effort into the PR piece of this. And I think that that's being appreciated. Parents know what's going on, they've got an opportunity to participate. I have received no negative feedback personally. The negative feedback that we've received, I think, is on the order of like two to three parents district-wise that have said anything about it. And theirs has been more concerned rather than, "No, I really, really, really want my kid eating chicken nuggets and french fries." You know, it's more of, "Well, what if my kid won't eat?" So I think overall, we're in pretty good shape. We have summer training planned. We're not going to let this go over the summer. There's an in-service on the 28th that's full day for all of the cafeteria staff. And then there are two additional days that we're going to give them through the summer so that everybody comes back with those sort of cooking muscle memory intact and just ready to go. And we will be here as we roll it out in the fall. And I just would like to point out that we brought all of this to you without charging a nickel. So, you know, it's, I think, a testament to what can be done when parents are fully engaged, when school districts engage with NGOs, and, you know, when there's sort of shared vision to what can be accomplished. So I give two thumbs up to the staff, I give two thumbs up to the principals and to the administration, to the teachers. The teacher support of this has been tremendous. I know they're talking to their kids in the classroom about it. This has been a multidisciplinary approach, and it's taken all hands on deck. I really encourage the school board, contact me anytime there's questions that you might have, anytime concerns come up. And then, you know, thank you for supporting these projects as we go along, because I think they're very, very, very important. And we're going to continue to do other things. We've got Jump Start, we've got Brain Breaks, we've got all kinds of stuff that we're going to continue doing and bringing to this district. So go up.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You said five schools. Is my son still eating chicken nuggets and french fries at high school?
K through six, or K through eight, I apologize. Kindergarten through eighth grade. The high school's a different beast, Lisa, and it is for several reasons. First of all, because high schoolers are just mentally ill. And second of all, because the high school is not subject to the National School Lunch Program. So it is really making money right now, and I know the high school principal isn't terribly keen on it becoming a money-not-making type of proposition. So there are, we're talking about it. There are some slow transitions that we can make, and I think some ways that in the long run, we can end up making the high school cafeteria very, very healthy, for profit still. But this is a process. And frankly, if I'd have tried to take that on, the whole thing would have gone flat because there are only so many hours in a week, and I'm using up all of them.
And I personally very, very much appreciate everything that you are doing for the kids in our district because it's very valuable. And yes, high schools are, high schoolers are a different breed. They do grow out of it, though.
And we'll get there. I mean, that's interesting, though, because, you know, we're hearing the cafeteria staff in intermediate schools saying, "Well, the kids are eating things that they didn't use to eat." Well, that's because they've been getting additional items on their grade school cafeteria trays. So they are learning. We're getting them early, they've been learning for a few years. It's just, it's retraining those taste buds, it's teaching them why they need to eat the healthier things. And the last five years has really seen an explosion of this information. The kids aren't immune to the, you know, the public messages that they're getting in the news and radio and elsewhere. So they're starting to make better choices themselves. Ultimately, as the adults, I believe, we're going to have to kind of pull the trigger and say, "Some of this stuff is going to go. You want to buy it outside of school, that's between you and your parents. But, you know, in, within our school walls, we're not going to provide you with the stuff that we know is making you sick."
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
I beat the thunder. I was waiting for me to clap the thunder.
It just lifted. It just sent the heat out, and it's gone.
Next, we have our financial reports. Thank you. Draft FY13 budget amendment.
Can you start the last one, Paris? Somebody's opening up outside. I just want to give you an update on where we're at currently through April. I realize we're already almost through May, but for the reporting purposes, expenses that have been entered in the system and payrolls and everything through the full month of April. These are the budgeted numbers by your ed fund, your top area, and then in the green area, that's the O&M fund by building and/or by district. What we budgeted at the beginning of this year for those particular areas, and again, keep in mind, we're only through April, so we've got two months still to go. But I just want to recognize the schools for keeping an eye on their budgets and still not spending everything that's there and only buying what's necessary. And they've done a really good job, especially here, the last, this part of spring, of really holding back, trying to not buy anything they just absolutely don't need that's critical right now. And they continue to do a good job with that. So we still will have some expenses through the end of June, of course. And O&M is pretty steady, because that's primarily custodial staff, you know, electricity, utilities, things like that fall in there. So those are going to be ongoing costs, kind of hard to curb those. But in the ed fund, I just want to give you an idea of where they're at based on what we budgeted versus what they've spent. So they don't see it as a green light to go spend everything, they just see it as they have authority if they need it based on need. So I just want to recognize that. And I did the thunder. All right. The middle one's a far-right one, they're the expenses. So to lead us into, I was hoping we wouldn't have to bring an amended budget. We were going to be real close, but unfortunately, anything that's over what you've already authorized through, from your first budget in September, if we're going to spend over those dollar amounts, hey, the fund areas, of course, we have to have your approval. So we've reached a point in the year where, looking at, this is a projection, if you just roll to the top for just a second, you'll see this is the projection through June, so we've tried to anticipate what the rest of May, which is a three payroll month, and the rest of June, which is just a two payroll month, would have an impact on spending, knowing schools will be getting out here soon. Some of the spending will stop there, but other spending continues. We have summer school, things like that. So trying to project based on not only history, but just this current year's spending, where we think we're going to be by fund through the end of June. Note, in the ed fund, while we might be slightly over in some areas, again, the projected transaction versus the budget. So the middle area, the middle column there is what we think you're going to spend versus the far-right column is the budgeted amount. And you might be slightly over in salaries and slightly over in the capital outlay, but as a line as a whole, we're going to come in slightly under still the budgeted amount. So I'm not actually recommending, we don't have to individually approve a budget by your salary or your benefits, it's by the fund. So as a fund as a whole, you've authorized the spending right there, say, $34,460, $246,000. So you've authorized by approving of your budget that total amount in the ed fund. There's a couple of lines in there where one might be over, one might be under, but it's a combination there within the ed fund. This is the authority you've already given us on the current budget. So I still think we're going to come in under that number. I don't think we're going to go over in the ed fund, so I think that's good news because that's the majority of our budget is in the ed fund. However, in the O&M fund, I do want to point out that we're going to be, again, slightly over in salaries, slightly over in purchased services, and slightly over in the capital outlay, the primary areas. So we are going to be a little bit over, about 4% over the budgeted amount. So we need to increase authorization in the O&M fund. Now, tonight, you're not making any approval. All you're going to be doing, or what I'm seeking for you, is permission to post the draft budget for 30 days prior to your June board meeting. And then at your June board meeting, we'll present you with final numbers, and you'll make a recommendation action item at that point. So right now, all you're doing is giving the authority to post a draft amended budget. And then debt service doesn't change, we don't have any other expenses in there until summer. And then if you go to the next page, transportation's the other fund that we appear to be going to be short based on what we budgeted for in the fall. Again, slightly, I wouldn't even say slightly, I'd say significantly over in salaries, a little bit over again in the purchased services, and then supplies and materials. So we're going to come out looking at increases in both the O&M fund and the transportation fund, are the two funds that I'm recommending. We need to increase authority for expenses.
How come we're so much over on salaries?
It's a good question. Comes to estimating, comes to budgeting, some of the, we did some changes this year. Primarily, transportation had been paid on a contracted basis, for one thing. So their contracts, they were based on a route in years past. So we said, "This is what your route is, this is what you get paid." This beginning of this year, it went strictly to hourly. So while we looked for ways to combine routes and to not hire staff when not, if not necessary, so if somebody were to leave, we looked for a way to try to absorb that route. So we may have a few less people than maybe we thought we might. They actually drove a little bit more, and they were actually on an hourly rate as opposed to that per route amount. So I think there was some, this is the first year on that. So again, not exactly knowing how it was going to fall. And that's through April, when we also had a contract ratification with the ESP. And we had the retro pays that we had to catch up, and the transportation is a good portion of that area as well. So it's not all of it, but it certainly accounts for more than what was anticipated beginning of the year. We didn't know where the budget was going, where the contract was going to fall, what retro pays were going to be paid, how the hourly rate for routes was going to really pan out, so.
And we anticipated that would be less.
Yes, that's what...
I know. So we actually, well, see, so looking at last year's spend through April, or through the end of the year, that's projected, that's that $1.3 million there in the first column is what was spent last year through that time. But we anticipated it to be less, so when we budgeted, we budgeted for less.
Does this take into account the fact that when we approved that, when that, we finally got to the end of the contract, or the negotiation period, we had multiple years to pay?
All retro pays have been paid through April.
And that's in there.
And those are inclusive in that number.
So we had, you know, we were on, we were in negotiations almost two years on this thing. So it went back to the 11-12 school year?
Correct.
So we had...
So anyone who was owed money for the 11-12, including some retired...
Right.
Were in that number.
Were in that number.
Plus some retro for this year because they were then due an increase that would have started this year. So there was a back pay for this year for many people as well, and all of that's included in that dollar amount. So it was all paid now. So that's when we incurred the cost, so it shows in this year's budget. So having that contract cost does play into that.
So we would hope that next year, I would assume, or we'd look at it, that it would...
Be more level.
Yes, closer to what we're looking at as opposed to that.
And we'll know how many we have, we know what their hourly rates are now, and we know what their increases are, so it's going to be better to, we shouldn't be as far off next year.
Was there anything in the current adopted budget to account for those retro payments?
No. We kept it where we thought we were going to be, not knowing when or if a contract was going to be ratified, and we didn't know.
So regarding this, are you thinking about what's transpired for this fiscal year and how you need to maybe make some changes for your fiscal '13-'14 budget? Because is it the budgeting that needs to be fine-tuned, or is it the reduction of actual expenses that need to occur, besides the salary issue? Because that's $400,000 over.
Right. And then again, with the contract, we were unsure, we had no way of knowing where the numbers were going to be. And again, it doesn't account for all of it. We also were anticipating there was going to be savings there with some less employees in that area, as more routes were being combined. So the discussions about all of the budgeting was, "We're going to budget for less because it's what we're expecting it to be." And then...
It didn't happen.
It just didn't happen this year. So for all good intentions, it just, you know, it didn't work that way.
So what do you think the catch-up number was on that ESP?
Already, we're probably in the $200,000 range. And again, a majority of those, what I would say, fall into the O&M and the transportation areas. Some do fall in the education fund portion.
Because we still have one more year of increases.
But we don't have the retro, we don't have the...
We all have to back pay.
Catch-up. And all has to be done at one time. And we've been able to take advantage of Skyward, which is our software program that we use for both financial and for student management. And beginning of this budget for this year, we started processing that through electronically. Department heads and principals can put in their budget requests through the system, so we have a record of it. We cloned those over this year. So really, from a standpoint of making sure we're not missing a line, and we're not missing a budget item that regularly occurs from year to year to year, we're using the system to make sure that doesn't happen, so that we don't miss lines and say, "Oh, it was there last year." Now, just because it was there or we had an expense doesn't mean we're going to force it current for one year. But we think by having this electronically and getting more familiar with it, we're alleviating the issue of, "Oh, we left something out." And I don't believe we left something out here. We made a conscious decision to make that a lower dollar amount because the anticipation was it was going to be lower. And the reality after this year progressed was, in fact, it not ended up being lower. So we simply just couldn't make that happen.
But some good things happened. The ESP contract is a good thing to have behind us, so.
So any other questions on this? Those are the two areas that I've been recommending. And if you're busy, why don't you go to the next, the first one? Thank you. This is a one-page layout, kind of blow up just a little bit. And the red column on the right there, the FY13 expense projection, that says amended. This is what I would amend the dollar amounts to. I'd only change the O&M and the transportation. When all the numbers add up, it's about $500,000 more than what we proposed in the fall. Again, I do expect that the ed fund will actually come in less, so there's somewhat of a balance in there. I really don't think we're going to spend as much as we still budgeted for, but I didn't want to drop that because I don't want to find out that all of a sudden we are getting, you know, close to that number. So I left the ed fund as budgeted. I didn't want to reduce it any. It still does not put us in a situation where we have to file a deficit reduction plan with the state board. We're still in that, while it's an unbalanced budget, we still are within the window that they allow you to have one before you have to file a plan. So we haven't exceeded that threshold. And I believe these are dollars. And we'll bring you a revised one in June. Of course, we'll be very close to the end of the year already, but we'll already be through the full month of May. We'll see again where we're at with those three pays and where everything has fallen, if any of those numbers still need to be tweaked at all. But this is the draft proposal that we would put out for 30 days, make available for public here if you approve it. And then you'll take final action on this or a revised version of this.
It's getting late, but I have one important question to ask. Looking at this fiscal year draft amended budget, the proposed number for education revenues projection was like $33.3 million. And yet, when you look at the actual revenues as of April 30th, you know, on the other sheet, it's $20 million. So...
I can talk about that when we get to that point?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all.
Okay. I'll address that when we get to the next section.
But I also would say that in, looking at the schedule, it doesn't take current information and incorporate it into this draft amended budget because there's no way the 613 fund balance projection for education, it's $4.2 million. No way. I mean, we're, as of April 30th, we're at negative whatever for the education fund balance. So I look at the, I look at what's been, you know, printed actually on your other reports, and then I look at this, and the most current information isn't incorporated into the schedule.
Right. We still haven't gotten all of our revenues, we still have two months to go, we're still getting taxes, we're still getting revenues from the state. All revenues haven't been received. So, you know, yeah, it's a budget, it's a plan, and it's an estimate of where you think you're going to be. And that's what it always will be. It's never meant to be an actual of where you're at at one time, it's always meant to be a plan of what you expect to happen.
So you think the budget is going to, the balance, the fund balance for the education fund is going to basically go from a negative 1.5 at April to a positive 4.2 by June 30th?
Don't we start, don't we, I know it's sitting at my desk, don't we get the first installment property?
You get two tax payments, one in May and one in June, which are still part of those revenues.
And our, and property tax?
Right. Among other state revenues, but that's the, from your levy, that's the majority of, you're going to get two payments, one small one in May, a larger one in June. And the majority of that is the Ed Fund dollar amounts.
So that 4.2 can be reached?
Of course.
Okay, good. Help me, there at the bottom, it's got total budget, and then right below it, it talks about a comparison that's used by ISB?
Yeah. That's, that's just the operating funds.
Okay. What's that total budget mean to us?
Total budget means all revenues, including money you get for bonds, which are outside of our control, they're going to be set automatically by your bond schedule, and any revenue you might get on capital projects, so, but that's everything, every piece of revenue, that's your total budget, it's the entire revenue stream.
So if there's $3.5 million difference in them, is that important to us?
Not so much as the operating fund that drives ISB issues and your status, it's, you have to report on your operating fund, because it's what the things you have control over, some control over. So where you're thinking, between your Ed Fund, your O and M Fund, and Transportation Fund, and your working cash, the areas that you think you're going to be getting, what you're budgeting for both on revenue, what you think the state's going to give you, or what you're going to levy for, what you have some control over, versus your expenses and those which you have a lot of control over, that's the difference they're looking at, is in the operating fund. You don't have control over your debt service, so the bond and interest is always excluded from that, because it's set by what the, what you sold in bonds, what the voters, if it went through referendum, or it didn't go referendum, but whatever bonds you sold, are, the schedule is set, sort of like your mortgage on your home, it's set on what needs to be paid, what the interest is on that, and that automatically is reported to the county, and they apply that to the taxes automatically for us. So we have no control over that one, so ISB takes that out of the equation. So while it's total, they take it out, because you have absolutely no control over that.
And that's the blue, the comparison number?
Right, so when we're doing the comparison, it's taking out bond and interest, for example, that's always removed from that equation.
So shouldn't we try to be balanced in that total, if that's our real numbers?
We're going to present it, the balance is going to come on the operating side, that's where it'll be balanced or unbalanced, and that's on the ISB's budgeting forms, you're going to be balanced or unbalanced based on your operating terms.
Is, is, you're saying that, yeah, that's fine, whatever ISB says, but should the district care over?
Exactly. I mean, what's that total budget mean to us? And why is it $3.5 million?
Give you a picture of, through a course of the year, what's the revenues this district may bring in, and what are the expenses this district may incur as a total?
So isn't that a, is that a real number? Isn't that the real number we're getting?
Yeah, some of it's the bond and interest, which is a pre-established number that you have absolutely no control over, that you can't change in any way, except for to refinance bonds and some things like that. But it's a schedule that you're required, you're obligated to make this payment regardless. You can't change that number in your budget. So what we'd be looking for here, then, is of course, correct and approval authorization from the Board to post this draft budget. Again, you wouldn't take any action until June on any, any budget, actual budget amounts.
Did GSA loss?
That's the number that, due to the proration this year, that we're not receiving from the state, that we're actually, we're entitled to by calculation and by law, but we're next, that's the part our district is not receiving in general state.
So that's totally foregone?
It's gone, yeah, correct.
So the $3 million that we're planning on cutting for next year, what number will it come off of?
The operating fund is where you'll see that, connect that closing, the gap closing there. But it's across multiple funds, between the Ed Fund, the O and M Fund, Transportation Fund, between all three of those is where the cuts have occurred. For example, the Transportation Fund, they're not going to be purchasing buses next year, so there's a large amount that comes just out of their fund that would not be in the budget.
The 1.35 in teacher salaries is in the Ed Fund, and so it just kind of depends on what?
Just as some examples.
But it's overall operating expenses.
One quick question, do you have a guess? Here, I know we're talking about, in essence, this draft amended budget is based on the cash basis, correct? We're on the cash?
On the cash basis, that's correct.
Correct, okay. So I'm still confused, can you say with confidence that, as of April 30th, we have $20 million? And you're, can you say with some degree of assurance that we'll get $13 million sometime between now and June 30th to make this proposed revenue projection number a good number?
The revenues are always the biggest guess in any of your budgets, especially with the way the state's been the last several years.
I know.
I can't say with certainty anything on those revenues.
So my question is, if this is an amended budget, why aren't we dropping the revenue number?
We can.
I mean, I think, I think the number 33 million for projected revenue, when we're sitting at 20 million for, at April 30th, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, because-
In the end, the Board has to approve the expenses, they don't have to approve the revenues. So the revenues are, we're going to get what we're going to get based on grants and what we're eligible for, and the title and things like that. So while the number is part of the budget, what the Board has to approve and give the district authority to spend is in the expenses. So the biggest issue out of your approving a budget, whether in the fall or an amended one, any other time throughout the year, is to approve expenses up to an amount that you believe you're actually going to incur.
I think that's correct, except the projected revenue numbers and the projected expense numbers give you the number whether or not you're deficit spending or not, correct?
Right, I can't, right, we are, we are out of control, we don't have the control with the revenues. We still expect money that we're due from ISB, we may or may not get it by June 30th, or we may not get it until September, for example.
So I guess my point is, the revenues are so questionable that we need to make our expenses, we need to plan for the fiscal '13-'14 year to reflect the great uncertainty in revenues.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Well, you couldn't agree with me more.
Correct, for '13-'14, absolutely, I could not agree with you more, absolutely.
Okay. We're going to have to monitor this like a hawk, because we're still deficit spending for this year, for the '12-'13 year.
Yes, I can't change-
No, no, I understand. But I think all of these, looking at the schedule, becomes very important as the '13-'14 budget gets talked about in detail.
Yeah, exactly why we went through all the, you know, the really difficult task of cutting the $3 million, because we knew that that absolutely is an issue.
Be the case.
Yeah, we might need to.
But it could, it could be more.
Correct.
Right?
Depending on what the state does, yeah.
More than likely, and we've got, we're working on-
Yes.
Plans, right?
But $3 million is not-
That's a head start.
It's not, you know, I, we did a lot, so, yeah, we're absolutely looking, always looking at more, but, which is why you had two reductions today. You had two reductions in staff and your, in your personnel consent, you know, the additional things that we're doing to cut in the budget. So we look at it every day, absolutely.
We're at some serious situations with no safety net and-
Right.
Plan is-
And we're not taking it lightly.
Definitely.
That's why we have two more reductions today, that you just approved.
Any other questions? And the recommendation is to tentatively approve the FY '13 budget amendment for posting purposes. The actual amendment will be presented at the June Board meeting. So I need a motion to approve that posting of the tentative FY '13 budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second. Brandon, in a second. Thank you, Lisa. Call roll, please.
Yes, Orley. F. Steve Carter, yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, 10-2, some fee proposal for next year.
Correct. So that's if we can- So the Cabinet and Directors have met several times since February and March to discuss fees, and we've looked at all the fees that are collected through the district, and how long they've been in existence, and when's the last time they were changed. And as you heard tonight with C4, and the changes that have been ongoing with food, for example, it was natural that even the food became an issue that we immediately had to look at and say, you know, what the cost of, what it's costing this district to put together this meal versus what we're charging is not enough, it needs to be increased to reflect minimally what the cost is to try to, you know, to make the meal. So it started with food, and then, as the budget talks continued, of course, it branched into other areas of fees for the district. What's before you is the current fee in those areas, and then a proposed dollar amount that the administration is recommending increase. And they certainly don't do this lightheartedly, and they know this has an impact on families, but the reality is, there are costs associated with programs and services, and we need to look at increasing student fees.
How did the rentals, book rentals compare to other schools in our county?
We did look at that, and they're kind of all over the board, you know, you'll find that some districts are, are, you know, more expensive in other areas and lower than ours, and, and, you know, a different grade level, so it's kind of all over the board, but fairly similar to what we have proposed.
So we're not necessarily the most expensive district in-
Right, right.
In some categories you might be, but in other categories, depending on how they classify their fees and what grades encompass in their fees, you might not be. So it's a, it's a mix kind of across the board.
I have a question, I'm sorry to keep publicing these numbers, but it's really important that the driver's ed fee is so sufficient and high enough that we're not, the district is not subsidizing that, the driver's ed portion.
Sure, the dollar amount that's recommended there is the dollar amount recommended and allowed by law. So that's the maximum we can, we can request by law.
Is that right?
Without a waiver, that's the maximum we can request in school code.
Because I did a calculation back when Mr. Gillum was here, there was a blurb on driver's ed way back in November of 2010. And looking at that number, it doesn't seem high enough to me, but-
Statutorily, we are limited to that number.
Okay, that's good to know.
So I'm sorry, that's, without going through other avenues and getting a waiver, that's the highest we can go by statute. So we have capped out there.
And I think when we looked at those back then, Mr. Gillum had said that, and I think was that, we had applied to even go above where we were.
Back then, you did, the law had changed to statutorily, and increases for every district, should they choose, and then, of course, we held off as long as we-
Good, we're at the point where we just need to charge that fee.
So we, I mean, for a later time, do you know how much we're subsidizing the driver's ed?
No, I don't have that number right now.
We did study it years ago, but we haven't recently. We did study it years ago.
Yeah, I did the calculation.
Just, just out of curiosity, by going with them proposed increases, what kind of extra revenue are-
Based on the numbers that those have paid today, and based on, you know, this year as an example, is your baseline, if the same number of students who qualified for REDUCE, who qualified for waivers, who paid and actually have paid, based on those same numbers across all these areas, you're looking at about $119,000 increase in revenue.
Just in that schedule right there?
Correct. You don't know the number of athletes, athletes that may come, you don't know, family numbers may change, so obviously, they're completely flexible there. However, based on everything staying the same for one year, you can estimate that it's to be $119,000 in revenue. There are many who have not paid, who owe, and there are other, so the number could increase a little bit, but it could also decrease, you can find more that are eligible for waivers. Some may not participate in sports that have, I mean, you don't know what those numbers may be.
Patrick, can we include dual credit? We had talked about dual credit being $25, but we didn't put it up here, so we'll have them amend that, is that okay?
Sure.
Are you okay with that? And amend the motion to include driver's ed, or, I'm sorry, dual credit was $25, we talked about that before, we just don't have it up here, so.
Do we pay Lincoln?
Thanks for catching that.
For?
Nope.
No?
It's not a requirement. We do have to purchase the textbooks, though.
Okay, which are more expensive than-
Correct, and they tell us what book they want.
If they were to adopt a new book that we didn't have, they would have to purchase it.
We just have to purchase it.
So we talked that this would be a good opportunity to, and we didn't want to hammer their kids at the point where they can take the courses, but at least to have the pool of money and new textbooks or other resources we needed for these courses.
And, but we're not paying tuition to Lincoln because we're providing the instruction?
Correct.
That's why it's a great thing for our kids.
It's great, free college.
Yeah, and it's less expensive than if they were to take the AP course, the AP test.
Some students are able to get as much as a full year of the college completed before they ever even graduate.
Exactly.
Does $25 cover our cost to that?
For the book, it's hit or miss, you know.
We had a new book adoption in several, three, four years, so.
But our kids are also paying the book fee, you know, so it's kind of, this is just an additional fee for that, that book, but you haven't, it's been a while since-
We have not had a specific Lincoln adoption since we've done-
So we own those books, but-
Two years.
But maybe something in the future we have to increase, but we hate to-
So we have a book that may be reused the next year, so hopefully it's supporting itself.
Right.
Because at the parent, everybody would kick in-
Yeah. And it may be something we have to-
To make the program self-supporting as itself saves college.
Yep, exactly. And it may be something we have to increase in the future years, but at this point, we're just trying to encourage more and more students to participate, so, you know, I know that they were trying to keep it somewhat minimal.
Rochester charges 50, and they do allow the student to keep their book. We do not allow our students to keep the book, which is why we kept it.
That's a good point.
So we can use it for your do.
Good point.
How many courses, dual credit courses do we offer?
We have four in the business area, we have a novels and reference course, and a US history dual credit.
Don't you still have speech, too?
Speech as well, which is offered at the other year.
So two, right, three, and four. Eleven.
Any other questions? So, and the recommendation is to increase fees as presented this evening in your board packets. I need a motion to approve those increases for the FY '14 school year.
Can you amend it, too?
Oh, yeah, we need amended to, also to add the dual credit fee of $25.
Do you make motions the second one amended?
No, it was just, motion as amended. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Call roll, please.
Carter, yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Orley.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have something we have to do every year, it's the prevailing wage ordinance.
This has been a consent agenda item before, but due to us having a financial section, we'll just simply put it here in case there are questions. This comes from the county, it's something every district's required to do annually. The county, we will forward this to our ROE, they will post in the newspaper for us. The fact that we've adopted the resolutions for the county is a hundred percent.
Any questions, comments?
There's, there's legislation out, interestingly enough, about, you know, it's, I don't know, okay. To make our lives more difficult than it could have been, but anyway, I agree.
Oh, you mean some more legislation that's going to do that?
Yeah, similar about this, so, that's okay.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I need a motion then to approve the prevailing wage ordinance as presented. Thank you, Rick, in a second, please.
A second.
Thank you. Susan, and call roll, please.
Tom.
Yes.
Maddox.
No.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel, yes.
Orley.
Yes.
Carter.
No.
Yes.
And this is-
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you.
You have to start the revenues, that's if you don't have the revenue. This is through April, this is actual, so the number, the documents I've before was an expense, is a projection. These are revenues, and as, as Worley pointed out earlier, she's correct in that our revenues are low in this area, and I'll remind the Board and for some of the newer Board members that, from a school district, our revenues come in traditionally in a particular time of the year. So while we have expenses throughout every month that are standard, student salaries and those kinds of things, we have revenues that only come in a few times throughout the year. And beginning with March, we begin to, or beginning with May, excuse me, we begin to And beginning with March, we begin to, or beginning with May, excuse me, we begin to get early taxes, which are really from the levy which we adopted in November. And for its for next year's revenues, however, we do start to see those early taxes come in as early as May. We have a little amount, we got 1.4 million already in this May. We had anticipated, we thought 2.1, because that's what we got last year, came in actually 1.4. And that really is a matter of how the people pay their taxes early, how much the county has in order to disperse. So we got to look about $600,000, $100,000 to last, and we actually thought we might get early taxes. At this point in time, we certainly hope that the June month, which is a substantially larger dollar amount, can be in the 15, 20 million dollar range in any given year. So we expect that the June to still be in that range, and we'll see where it falls with the June payment. I won't know until the June board meeting, but I will have a number by then, this usually comes in about the 15th of the month. So, and then we get those revenues through the summer, and they tail off into the start of the school year. So while your revenues may look low compared to the percent of the time of the year that you're in, they actually will pick up very rapidly between May and June. So that's typical, and ISB funny as well. I'd like to note at the bottom of this, however, we've been posting here for a while now what the ISB has delayed in their payments, and we're happy to report that ISB is only $532 behind, and that's one point service payment that they owe us on. Everything else that they voucher to us, they have actually paid, and I don't know, I haven't been able to say that in two years. So for what it's worth, we received nearly $900,000 from them in the last month or so, which is not all reflected in your April, because a lot of it came in in May. So again, back to this Worley's comment about how are our revenues going to be looking? We already are $900,000 higher, which your May will show than we've about we get. So there's almost a million of that right there. So ISB is current, don't know why, but we're thankful and we'll keep moving forward. So this is where we're at currently with revenues, and we'll continue to look better and better through May and June. Any questions about revenues?
Would it be possible, as part of your financial reporting, to include a schedule that outlines your payment draws on your line of credit?
You'll see that in one of the lines, yes.
But, you know, we have a rolling today, and we paid off the line, so we're back to zero, so we can just see the draws and repayments back on the line?
I think we'll capture that in one of these, it's already here.
Okay.
We have not made any payments back, we have drawn them. Any other questions about revenues? Expenses, that's... Thank you. So here we are, current through the end of April, expenses. You can see the Ed Fund, we're running about 78% of our budgeted amount, even though we're 83% of the year in, so I mean... And the expenses, we sort of already talked about with the draft and then the budget, where we think we're going to be over at the end of June, so that's really reflective here, too. Unless there's any other questions. These are actual through the end of April. And then if you go to the last document, the fund report. And here, I've added the line, if you look at a little bit, the line of credit transfers. So in April, we did have to access that line of credit, so that's the first time we've accessed that for the year. In May, you'll see more access to that line of credit, and I'm keeping the running total of what we've accessed, when we're paying it back, I already have that, so you'll have that already. We will have more we need to access, however, with ISB coming through with nearly $900,000, that certainly offset the timing of when it was looking like we were going to need to access some of that money. And with this early tax money coming in of 1.4 million, that again, helped push back some of what was needed on the line of credit. So we will be accessing more of that line of credit, but certainly not the full 3.5 million that we were eligible for this year if we needed to. But you'll see where we've accessed that line of credit. And so you'll see that fund balance bounce out into May, and I know that August, you know, or the April still shows a negative there. Again, we are still doing some entries, we are still working with our auditors, we're trying to identify some of these other numbers that I'm not comfortable with, that are showing up in the system as one fund being positive, one fund being negative. I'm still trying to backtrack on some of that with staff and auditors, but the system is showing this as the fund balance, but I don't believe it's completely accurate, I think it's, but I know it shows negative, but I anticipate that May one should not, so...
So you're still working with the auditors to try and...
Yeah, bear with me a little bit here.
Yeah, I know, you're trying to figure out how this is all...
If some of you may recall on a certain thing, I was, when this, when I came into this position when we started, and we began the audit process, and I began the audit process, we were very delayed in getting you an audit report that year. And it came out in January, and it was about November, December of that year that we learned with, through the auditors, that many of the bank statements hadn't even been reconciled as far back as even the previous fall. So there were some, so, and we were already halfway through a year ourselves. So I don't say that as an excuse, I just wanted to remember to paint the history that we've been trying to overcome some issues and cleaning up some things, and it's still just continuing to take us some time to get everything correct. I do believe the auditors are comfortable with what we're doing, they've seen some of the changes we've already made, and why some of the findings, some of the findings will continue, because the reality is it just takes some time to continue to correct some of those. And I think, you know, each year is looking better, and we just need some time. And this time of year, we find that we're short on cash at the banks, hence the lines of credit, and we're still trying to, through the budget, through the reductions in staff, things that we've done, we're trying to correct that. It just takes, it's a cycle, and it takes time to correct those things.
So, but do you think by the May 30th financial reports, you know, you and the auditors will have, you know, your numbers will, so by May 30th?
I'm hoping. They were only able to come in actually one day this time, and I thought they were going to hear a little bit more, to work in more depth with some of us. They know what we're working on, and they're only able to give us a day this time. As you may know, August 15th, April 15th is tax season, and they certainly were swamped to finish in a lot of other areas, so...
Okay. Any question?
You're a few months away, they cleaned that.
I keep saying that, but I do believe that, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Need a motion then to approve the treasurer's financial report as presented this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Susan, and call the roll, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel. Yes. Worley. Now, Carter.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
And this is...
Yes. All right, on the new business.
So, to our auditors.
Yes, it's an auditing services contract.
Again, by law, we are not required to bid for auditing services. And I believe, given the relationship that we have with our current auditors, the work that they've done, the work that we've been able to do with them, and the comfort level we have with them and our books, I believe it would be prudent to extend their contract for a period of up to three years. I don't have a dollar amount from them at this point, I'll certainly report that back to as soon as they have one, but I would request that we authorize the, you know, an intent to renew based on them submitting to us, you know, their, you know, what they expect their fees to be for the next three years, which they can do for us. But at this point, I wasn't able to secure a dollar amount from them in time, but I did want to, I would recommend that we continue our services with them. We're not required by law to bid that. We may bid it, the district board so chooses, it just puts a little bit more time in there. But we've got a good relationship going with them, I think they understand us and our working, and they've given us a good direction, and I think we'd like to continue our work with them as opposed to bringing somebody else in at this juncture.
How long have we used that?
They just finished a third year term.
Well, I noticed that we paid $35,000 for the audit, is that correct?
I'd have to check the bill to be sure.
Were there, or there must have been additional consulting services?
Sure, every one of their invoices has come through, some are related specifically to the audit, and some are related to other assistance that the district seeks.
Okay.
So they keep those separate.
Right.
And those invoices have all come through the board, I'd have to tally them up differently, but they would all show in the board bills. Yep. Yep, and they're very conscious about keeping their separation between what they're doing for auditing versus what they're doing to assist us with guidance or recommendation in areas to improve checks and balances.
Did we bid them initially?
We did bid initially, so they won the bid to allow them to start with the FY11, then the 12, then the 13 year. So they did win the bid at that point. It was in the spring of '10, the bids went out, and they came in as the recommendation. Prior to them, we had a company called Pelman and Dole.
And I recall at that time when we put that out for bid, we felt like it was time to change auditor...
What I've understood, and nothing against any of the auditing firms, is that this particular, the firm that you had before may not have been as versed in some of the areas of school of finance as maybe this one was, and they just needed someone with a little more expertise specific to school of finance. It was what I've heard, I don't have anything to back that up, but it was my understanding for why the bid went out originally, and I think we've found a firm that definitely is very well versed in school finance.
Any other questions, comments? All right, then, recommendation administration to renew the contract with the accounting firm of, help me with this, Mo, is it Most?
Most, Yockley Brown.
Yockley Brown and Cull for three years. Need a motion to that effect.
Should we amend that to include contingent upon acceptable?
Yeah, because we don't...
Well, sure, yeah.
We don't have their quoted rates this time, sure.
Because they come back in twice as high as I've heard before.
Yeah.
Now that they've got our business.
They need, they need this, they need this type of recommendation, they need this authorization, if you will, sort of intent, if you will, to good faith move forward and continue to provide assistance.
So then it's...
Is there outside of their audit scope as having completed their audit? So knowing they're under contract potentially for three more years, and the intent of the board is to continue to hire them for another three years, and that allows them to continue to provide some services and submit some invoices for assistance that we're seeking from them as we move forward. But yeah, contingent upon, you know, getting from them a quote on what it would be for those annual, so we've...
So it'd be...
Reword that then.
Yes, it'd be to renew the contracting services with our accounting, or with our auditing firm for three years based on acceptable, or contingent upon acceptable pricing or terms for the next three years. Okay, need a motion to approve that?
So moved, that's...
Thank you. Brandon, second, or Steve second, okay, and call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Weitzel. Yes. Worley. Yes. Carter. Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
And this is...
Yes, okay. Next one is, I think we have somebody different at the podium, and I think we've got two people back there that sat through the whole meeting, but anyway, go ahead, Jim, for our Route Finder software.
Good evening. For most of you board members, I was here about a year ago, and we discussed a new software program for transportation, with the, with the hope that that would be implemented prior to school, starting for the 13, 14 school year. I am very happy to report that we have fully implemented Route Finder, we are utilizing it fully every day, and it probably is the single most powerful tool that I have seen or been a part of as far as transportation route. Several districts around use this program, others have used the ones that we've used in the past, and it is a very fully integrated program. It integrates with Skyward directly, so we download our data from our student database directly into our transportation system every night. Our plan was hopefully to be ready to go by school next year for, for the board members who were here last year. At that point, we had made a conscious decision not to purchase the additional module that we're talking about this evening, because we didn't feel like we would be able to implement both of those at the same time. Now that we're ahead of the curve and moving forward, we find that that particular module will satisfy some very specific needs that we have in the district. Both Mrs. Larson and Chad have sat through a demo of that module. It will allow us to provide transportation information live time to all of our secretaries in all of our buildings. So we no longer have to have anybody who has a question about transportation call Cindy Mike and says the transportation for us, because they do. And with this module, we will be allowed to provide that information to anyone in the district that we would like, it's unlimited access. So a transportation question can come in, they can look it up live, they don't have to call transportation. It also will give us the option to take some of those transportation duties in the Skyward that the secretaries have been entering data into Skyward with their best guess. Sometimes we can take that out of their hands and put that back in transportation exclusively. So the module gives us, gives us that opportunity. A year ago, I didn't know I'd be standing here asking for money that we hadn't budgeted because we didn't think that we'd be there at this point. I had worked with Patrick, I had worked with Chad to see if we can locate money to purchase the software. Both have said that there's money out there through software, through technology to buy this, so I did put on the, on the recommendation that it's both the transportation and the technologies departments' recommendation to purchase the software. It will, it will add $900 annual maintenance fee to what we pay Route Finder now. But I didn't even touch on the fact that it will entirely automate our field trip scheduling process. That's something we'll implement as we go ahead, but really feel like that's, that's an additional benefit to us that will benefit all of the district. We may not take any field trips next year, but...
We'll be ready to.
We will be ready when it comes, so... Questions?
I have one for Carrie on this one. Is this a transportation fund item, or can it be paid for out of a different fund?
Well, probably, it makes most sense to put it in transportation, but...
That's stressed.
Yeah. Makes the most sense.
Well, the other part of this is that Skyward's actually used by all of the industry. Software's been a part of our...
Because Skyward would be your, your demographic system, but probably it makes most sense to take it out of your budget, but... There wasn't any room?
Sure. No, it's, it really, and that's why I talked to Patrick and I talked to Chad about...
Is that what you're asking?
Technology.
To take out the techno...
Out of the transportation bet. It would be acceptable either place, but...
So this adds $10,800 in the additional maintenance cost?
No, 900 annually.
Oh, 800.
Yeah, 900 annually.
Okay, I thought monthly.
Oh, no, no, yeah, annually, good question, yeah.
I did catch it, it is annual.
Is there any other modulators that you thought might help out, or was this the only one that we looked at as a possible first?
There was one that we demoed at the same time. It was, it was a module that allows information for routing to be viewed by parents via web access. We don't feel that there are sufficient securities involved so that anyone who had an address could go and look up and see what bus was going to arrive or what time. We had some controls that would allow us to limit what was out there, but really Chad and Jill and I all agreed that we didn't feel that there were sufficient securities in place, so no, at this point, the short answer is no. What did I say, never? No, I wouldn't say never, but we've got another eight months worth of training and implementation on this. I'd say we have plenty of that.
Jim, is there any expected, like, return on investment on anything like this because of increased efficiencies or less manpower required, less support staff?
It's a little hard to quantify.
Because you're just looking for more streamlining between the buildings and your office.
Correct. This, this particular module is, is really switches of duties, cleaning up some of the processes. We have, not anybody, but we have people who aren't experts in transportation trying to make decisions about what bus students are going to ride, if they change daycare, if they're going to go to grandma's, making sure that we...
Know what bus that is.
...apply, you know, apply the policies that, no, we're not going to make the change, or know that bus is full and they can't ride, those, those kinds of things, while giving those same people access so that they can view data, live mode, and provide parents with accurate information. And we can, you know, at least two secretaries at every school that would be able to do that, and right now Cindy's or I have to do all of that. The number of calls, especially at the beginning of the year, is just, is just astronomical. So it really is about making that system more efficient. Certainly, there's some costing, not just particular modules, but in Route Finder in general, there's some costing methods that we've actually started doing when we look at, you know, we're going to run the route clockwise or counter clockwise, are we going to make five stops or seven stops, and how are we going to do those? We've actually been doing some costing on routes and trying to make economic decisions about how we run routes. Whereas before, we were just, you sort of had to do it intuitively, and that works sometimes, but now you can actually quantify. So it's, it's not a simple answer, it's hard to quantify.
Doesn't hurt anything.
No, no, absolutely not.
No, it just makes it a lot better to communicate. Do you pay for his Route Finder out of technology right now? Do Skyward, but I have to look at that. But anyway, either one could be fine.
Any other questions?
That's in your bedrooms.
The recommendation is then to approve the finance, let me see it here, I'm sorry, I got that one, it's two, finance, technology, problems, okay. wrong. It's two, finance, technology, I was just, okay. To approve the $4,500 to purchase the Route Finder additional software and annual support fees, $900 per year, based on the presentation tonight, and then in your board packet. Need a motion?
Either one is fine, because I mean, a lot of what Chad's, I was just thinking for streamline, so we understand what transportation costs us. It would make sense to be in his, in transportation funds. But, you know, software is, I mean Chad's budget is kind of overall software, so it can really come out of either place. But just so that you know what transportation issues cost us, probably better for it to be with Jim and his budget, so that you know what it's costing you to transport kids. You know what I mean? It's kind of here nor there, because it's next year's budget.
We'll be able to include on the claim that they don't pay, but we can certainly include it on the claim.
They pay 10%.
That's what I think. They're not paying, they're cutting it to less than 20%.
Exactly.
Keep putting pressure on that.
It is an eligible expense for a claim.
Just helps you know too, what it's costing you to transport kids.
So, we have a motion. I mean, you make the motion, okay? Thank you, Lisa, and a second, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Call the roll, please.
Whitehouse.
Yes.
Corley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we have a couple items here. We have a first reading for our Transportation Policy 4.110.
Really just a couple of items that we wanted to get in the policy that we're actually doing in practice. Some of the items we get, we get a lot of pushback on, and felt like we really wanted the board to look at this and make the decision and put it in policy. A couple of, you know, minor language changes, but when you were talking about in that second paragraph, pickup points not exceeding four tenths of a mile or four lots. That's what we've been doing in practice since we changed routes a couple of years ago. We didn't have that in policy, felt like that was important to be in there, because that's what we communicate to parents. And when they're requesting changes, we want to make sure that they understand that it won't exceed that distance, it may be less. But to do anything different would be violating court policy. In the third paragraph, I'm talking about no one other than students, parents, family staff participating in activity can be eligible to ride buses or school transportation. Again, another thing that we've been doing in practice, and that decision was made a couple of years ago for liability reasons, among other reasons, and it just wasn't something that had been put in policy yet. And then the other thing, which we're not doing today that we would like to do, we receive sometimes as many as 20 requests a day just in transportation. Again, maybe sometimes twice that many in buildings for transportation changes. Many of those are requested to be effective the same day. We struggle with the safety issues with students, trying to communicate that many changes on a daily basis between the secretaries of the building, the principal, or the teachers who put those students on the buses, the drivers, getting them to the proper location, and having somebody be there when that student gets home. And most districts require a minimum timeframe. Summer '24, summer '48, District 186 is a week. They won't make any change without at least a week's notice. So we don't believe that that's really the proper standard. You know, we don't have our own transportation department, so when we feel like 48 hours, we'll do a couple of things that will help us make sure that student safety is always first, that we have sufficient amount of time to get the student on the correct bus and to their correct location on the date that they're supposed to be there. It will also help reduce the number of last minute, oh, I forgot to call, I just need Johnny to go home with his friend across the street, and he pretty much left the bus. Those kinds of calls that we get regularly, it will help minimize those. So those are just the corrections that we'd like to, additions that we'd like to see.
This is first reading, it's information only, it'll be on, should be on consent agenda next month. And then, thank you, Jim. Are you the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next one is first reading of Policy 8.20, and it's community use of school facilities.
We've made some sweeping proposed changes to the facility use policy. Really tried to condense categories from three to two. We condensed the fee schedule, which was probably three quarters of a page long, or half a page long, down to a much smaller, or easy to navigate for users. I did receive a question about how the fees escalated, and with Mr. Murphy's help, the fees for utilities alone, and no other costs on an hourly basis at Glenwood High School is over $45 an hour. The other schools are less, or significantly less in some cases, anywhere from $6.80 an hour up to the $45.80 an hour. We tried to structure the fee schedule to make sure we're not subsidizing anybody who rents facilities. We know in some cases, classroom rental, as an example, is at $30 an hour. Those types of rentals are generally during hours that schools, the schools already open. So we're not really bearing additional costs. But gymnasiums and other types of facilities, when we're trying to run the utilities just for those groups, that's where some of the fee structure came from. We checked with other facilities. There are many school districts that don't rent their facilities at all. Community members, they don't have staff in there, they don't allow the facilities to be used at all. So since we are allowing rentals of our facilities, we wanted, you know, one, make sure that we weren't subsidizing, and two, the fee schedule hadn't been adjusted since, I think, August of 2009. So most of them, somewhere between 75 and 100% increase over a four-year period. But most of that is being driven by utility costs. Now with respect to, if you can go back to that fee schedule, as far as the auditorium, we were charging on an hourly basis. And we have heard, I've heard it once, I've heard it a gazillion times, that the auditorium at the high school is on par with the Hovland, and that people chose to come to Hovland because the costs were significantly cheap. And when we end up with our maintenance costs, repairing chairs, repairing the lights, those things, and our costs weren't sufficient to cover even our expenses in most cases. So I contacted Hovland, I also contacted the same auditorium, and went through, with extremely nice people in both places, and talked about their fee structure. The, I'm trying to think here, which, one of the, Hovland, I think, rented on a half-day basis, which is where we got the idea. It really gives us some flexibility, gives our users flexibility to be able to rent in a six-hour period. We define the times that it's available, as opposed to allowing renters to sort of dictate their schedule. We do some extra things with tech rehearsals and microphones, and those kinds of things, our lighting soundboards, we had no fee schedule for. And let's face it, with those, the more use they get, the sooner you have to prepare them. So we took a lot of what the Hovland did with their facility, and I wouldn't say we mirrored it, but it's pretty close. So that's what was driving the change to the auditorium. First reading.
First reading. Be back next month on consent. Any questions? Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. On to roundtable. I had something I was going to present, but I'll be till next month to do. We're running a little late tonight. Let's see here, we, a couple things. Triple I Conference is November 22nd to the 24th. Let Joe know if, you know, if days you're going to be up there, because we want to avoid any unnecessary room fees, et cetera. And if you're not going to go, let us know that too, so we don't register you to go to the conference in Chicago. Registration opens on June 10th, so we want to try and get in there as soon as we, or registrations as soon as possible. If you're going to take the train up, let her know as soon as possible dates and your preferences for that. Lisa, did you have something from?
We have a leadership for you, existing school members.
June 14.
June 14th is the one in Springfield, and there's their locations in the, on that. We all received an email, and there's required training for new board members, or is also required training for existing school board members. It doesn't have to be completed as quickly as the new board member training, but it has to be completed, I think, this year and like the next year.
Okay. We'll get that information out to everybody, get it on the Google online, get it pulled out, get it up to everybody.
But June 14th is the weekend here, and I know that I'm going to be out of town that weekend, but...
I'm signed up for 14.
You need to just let Joe know to sign you up for this. She'll handle the registration.
And then I'm going to leave for construction for next time, too. Carrie, you have?
I'm coming. Do they need to know how many of us are here? I'll be, graduation.
Yeah, maybe just tell Mr. Lee.
Let Mr. Lee know by graduation.
I'll be graduation.
Graduation.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'm sure you will not be, otherwise, Monday or Wednesday.
I only have four people on my list.
So you need a four-hour?
Carrie, do you have anything?
Just that, the end of the year breakfast is May 28, and, you know, please help us honor our retirees. That's really the extent of that breakfast, is to honor our retirees. The other thing, real quickly, the parade of pigs, thank you to everyone who participated or gave money, and they earned more than last year, so they raised $14,228 for our school district. So that's pretty exciting that they actually exceeded what they had done last year.
Last year, they bought Chromebooks?
Not with that. With that event, they targeted that for the art department, with the kilns and some of their things that they needed. But they have purchased our Chromebooks, the foundation has. Now, this year was for the microphones and whatnot for the high school auditorium. I can't hear very well, so you might be saying something that I didn't answer your question.
But they're doing a lot of good things.
Yes.
Yes, yes. They did purchase our group of Chromebooks, yep.
Yeah, thanks to the great MC, too.
I got a quick question. Strategic plan, where are we at on that?
We need to review Larry Dirks', you know, the work that we, that he sent us in hard copy, and then he emailed it to us as well. We need to update that. And what we had left it as is the individual groups. We're going to kind of email each other back and forth about what their one area was. But we also are going to plan to have an event, in fact, I'm glad you brought it up, because if it works on your calendars, in, we'd like to have a retreat, I'm looking at Mrs. Larson, in July. We changed it a little bit. Could you do July 26? Think about it. You don't have to tell me today, but look at your calendars to see if we could do a retreat. Last year, we did it at the high school, and part of that time we did was just administrators, and then part with the board. So we're kind of looking at that July 26 date, so we'll talk again later, but for now, you won't be.
I can't, but just, you know, others.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'll be back as well.
Just let me know. We don't have to decide tonight. We got a couple days, so. And we'll be using some of Jill's work with the Rising Stars, with the principals, to kind of streamline our, Jill's going to be in charge now, to streamline our work with Larry Dirks to the Rising Star. It'll kind of help us have some good conversations there, so.
And also, I'd like to make sure that we get a board self-evaluation process done this summertime, this summer summertime as well. We did do that, yeah, well, I did on the seventh.
I put that out in August, huh?
Yeah, sure.
Next two board meetings, June 17th, July 22nd. And anything else from anybody? Otherwise, it's an opportunity for visitors to address the board on any topic. No one? Okay. There's nothing else? Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Thank you.